Dave, you think we can jump right into the training session?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, cool. Sorry for the delay. So guys, this might be Etha's last training ever.
It is.
Oh no. But you can always just stop by for the half hour before the ZBA meeting.
Don't count on it.
No.
We catch it on TV later.
All right. Well, today's training session is about the statute of limitations for an Article 78. So under General City Law Section 81(c), any person or persons jointly or separately agreed by any decision of the Board of Appeals or any officer, department, board, or bureau of the city may apply to the Supreme Court for review by a proceeding under Article 78 of the Civil Practice Law and Rules. Such a proceeding shall be instituted within 30 days after the filing of a decision of the Board in the office of the city clerk. Now that 30 days, that's what we refer to as the statute of limitations. That's the timeframe in which someone has to submit their petition to the Supreme Court, not to the city clerk, to the Supreme Court clerk.
Of the state.
Of the county.
Of the county.
Yeah, it's the county. So Duchess County Clerk gets the petition. So you have 30 days from the filing of the decision. The statute of limitations for Article 78 proceedings is generally four months after a determination becomes final under the Civil Practice Law and Rules, Section 217 Subsection 1. That's what we call CPLR. This all turns into alphabet soup, but the CPLR has a four-month statute of limitations. However, Section 217(1) qualifies the four-month period by recognizing that a shorter time may be provided in the law authorizing the proceeding. So for decisions by the ZBA, General City Law Section 81(c) is the authorizing statute. It provides that Article 78 must be instituted within 30 days after the filing of the decision in the office of the town clerk. So the decision is filed in the office of town clerk, then you have 30 days to file your petition with the Duchess County Supreme Court Clerk. So that's just the overview. Now, everyone has a hard copy of this PowerPoint in front of you so you can follow along. You don't have to look at the screen. I probably should have mentioned that first, I'm sorry. So filing of the decision, what does that mean? So a zoning or planning board concludes its review of a land use application when it renders its final decision on the application. The decision may be in the form of a vote by board members taken at a public meeting or in a written decision approved by the Board. So we prepare our formal resolutions, but that's not required in every municipality. General City Law Section 81(9) states that filing of a decision and notice, or pertains to filing of a decision and notice, "The decision of the Board of Appeals on the appeal shall be filed by the office of the city clerk or the zoning office if such office has been established within five business days after such decision is rendered, and a copy thereof mailed to the applicant." The statute does not require that filing with the clerk of the municipality indicate individual member votes, nor does the failure to include such information of the filing alleviate petitioner's need to observe the statute of limitations. So the requisite filing of the decision has to take place within five business days after the day the decision is rendered. And like I said, the law further requires that a copy of the decision be mailed to the applicant, but it does not specify a timeframe within which the mailing must occur. The timeframe is only the filing of the decision. The filing of a written decision will start the running of the 30-day period, that 30-day statute of limitations. However, several courts have held that the limitations period may also be triggered by the filing of minutes of a meeting at which a decision was rendered, provided that the minutes reflect the vote of each board member. So while a decision doesn't have to reflect the vote, you know, your resolution doesn't necessarily have to say how everyone voted, the minutes absolutely do. And that's a requirement in General City Law and in the open meetings law. So failure to commence a proceeding within this time, within the 30 days, requires dismissal of the petition. And I keep using this word petition. That is the document that starts the proceeding. That's what you file with the court. Does everyone follow so far?
To start the appeal.
To start your appeal of the ZBA decision. You file a petition.
Right.
So in our practice, in our practice, it's 30 days from when we vote?
30 days from when it's filed.
So would you...
So it wouldn't be like if you voted tonight...
And then Dave signs later in the week?
And Dave signs later in the week, and it goes to OLA. That's what starts the filing, when it gets to OLA.
And how is the public supposed to know when that happens?
So that's actually what we're going to be talking about, but it's their responsibility. And when I say "they," oftentimes the petitioner is the person that's filing the petition, appealing the ZBA decision. So if I say any legal terms that are unclear, just let me know. So it's your responsibility to follow up with the city to see if it was filed with the city clerk. So that might mean calling the city clerk's office or filing for a FOIL request, just staying on top of, you know, where is that decision? Because it seems straightforward. It's 30 days from the filing of the decision, but we're going to see there's a lot of nuances to that, and it is a complicated issue. And it's important to stay on top of because if you mess up that 30 days, if you miscalculate by one day, your petition's dismissed, you're done. And you can't, you lose the opportunity to take, you know, your appeal to court. There's no going backwards. So it's a big issue.
There's really no rule that the public can depend on that we have to file our decisions within a certain amount of days, right?
Yeah, so, I mean, the filing has to take place within five days after the day this decision is rendered.
Oh, I see.
But we'll see...
Never mind.
Does that really impact the statute of limitations if you mess that up? It's, so, and I think it's important, this issue, you know, is important one if you guys ever want to take an Article 78 for a project you're working on and wherever it may be. But more importantly than that, for our purposes, it's being aware of these timelines so that we make sure that all our decisions are filed. And that's not so much the responsibility of this board, but I think, you know, it's our responsibility as administrative staff to, you know, make sure that things get filed and, you know, minutes are done appropriately, things like that. But I think it's important for this board to be aware of, which is why I thought it was an interesting topic to talk about. Plus, the cases are interesting because they are so nuanced. A topic you think is straightforward, you know, you put a set of facts to it, and it's not so straightforward anymore. So that brings me to, and these are, this is not a case law update, these aren't new cases across the board, they're from, you know, different years. I don't think I went back farther than 1991 might be the oldest one, but these are not like super recent. Anyway, so this case involves an Article 78 proceeding being brought to review a determination of a village zoning board of appeals which granted a developer's application for a use variance. So Village Law Section 7-712(c)(1) states that a proceeding pursuant to CPLR Article 78 to review a determination of the Board of Appeals shall be instituted within 30 days after the filing of a decision of the Board in the office of the village clerk. Same language as the city law. So the petitioner argued that the statute of limitations was not told because the decision failed to indicate how each member of the zoning board of appeals of the village of Great Neck voted. So my question, after we had that preliminary discussion, was the statute of limitations told?
No.
Judy says no?
No, because they didn't put the votes of each member, which it told us that has to be in there in order for it to be filed correctly.
So you say yes, that the statute of limitations was told, meaning that it didn't start?
It didn't start.
Okay. So Judy says that it didn't start.
It started because the vote of the Board only has to be in the minutes. It doesn't have to be in the filed decision.
That's correct. That's perfect. So Village Law 7-712(a)(2) does not require that Board determinations indicate how each board member voted. It is undisputed that in accordance with Village Law 7-712(a)(1), such information was contained in the minutes of the Board meeting.
Where does it say that?
This is me reading. So this is listening time. In this case, it was undisputed that the subject determination was dated July 1, 2004, and was filed with the village clerk July 2, 2004. And the petitioners commenced their proceeding on August 12, which was more than 30 days thereafter. Again, not a lot of days after, but any days after means that it has to be dismissed. And like I said before, Village Law 7-712(a) is the same as General City Law Section 81(a) which states "meetings, minutes, and records. Meetings of such Board of Appeals shall be open to the public to the extent provided in Article 7 of the Public Officers' Law. Such Board of Appeals shall determine minutes of its proceedings, showing the vote of each member upon every question, or if absent or failing to vote, indicating such fact, and shall also keep records of its examinations and other official actions." That's the minutes. But 81(c) talks about the filing of the decision. And Section 81(a)(2) also talks about filing requirements, and it says "every rule, regulation, every amendment or repeal thereof, and every order requirement, decision, or termination of the Board of Appeals shall be filed in the office of the city clerk within five business days and shall be a public record." So there's two documents you have, meeting minutes and a decision. Now, some municipalities incorporate their decisions in their meeting minutes and only have one document. So it becomes even more complicated because you're not getting the same, necessarily the same document in every municipality. So being a land use attorney, you've got to kind of stay on your toes and know what you're looking for.
Yeah, so we really didn't have the information in order to answer that question in what we have written here, correct?
It's supposed to be tricky. But I...
We just...
Well, you do. If you go back, it's in the, it's in the slide before.
I, okay, so that's, okay.
Yeah, so I gave an overview, and then we're going to kind of tease it out with these case law examples. But yeah.
Just a question.
Yeah.
Both these cases, the variance was granted. So it's not the person who applied or the developer who applied for the variance who's asking for the Article 78? It's an outside group?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's a neighbor, someone who is going to argue that the zoning board of appeals didn't take the, you know, didn't review the five factors and maybe didn't do seeker correctly. We're not talking, we're not talking about the, we're just looking at these cases for statute of limitations issues. And a lot of the times, once the courts decide whether or not the statute of limitations pass, it's usually the first question, they won't go on to elaborate, you know, how they would have come out on the issue. You know, statute of limitations passed, we're done here. All right. In this case, the zoning board of appeals of the village of Croton-on-Hudson orally granted a variance to applicants after a public hearing held on December 19, 1988. A copy of the minutes of this meeting reflecting the Board's vote was filed in the office of the village clerk on or about January 4, 1989. On February 10, 1989, the appellant commenced a CPLR Article 78 proceeding to set aside the granting of the variance. Was the filing of the minutes sufficient to begin the running of the statute of limitations? So there was no decision, they voted orally, and then filed their minutes. Was that sufficient to start the clock?
I think the clock started when they voted, December 19.
Now, it's when it's filed, January 4. But on February 10, that's more than 30 days past, so they missed it.
That's not...
No?
That's not the question.
You're right.
Of course I am.
[laughing]
But that's not the question. Was the file, the filing of minutes was sufficient, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
You're right again. Perfect. Because there was no, there was no decision, so it starts with the minutes, which is going to reflect ultimately what the vote was. So the law permits a person aggrieved by a zoning board of appeals decision to challenge that decision in an Article 78, but requires that the proceeding be instituted, again, the rule, within 30 days after the filing of the decision in the office of the clerk. In this case, the appellant commenced the Article 78 proceeding 37 days after the minutes incorporating the ZBA's decision were filed in the office of the village clerk. The Court of Appeals held that the filing of these minutes on January 4, 1989 was sufficient to begin the running of the statute of limitations, and that the appellant's claim was time barred. The minutes were not, even though the minutes were not approved by the Board until a subsequent meeting, does not affect the date of filing. So if they were sent to the clerk, even if they weren't necessarily approved by the Board, that starts the clock.
What's our procedure?
We file the resolutions with the village clerk. We do not, ah, village, I'm sorry, city clerk. We do not file the, we don't file the minutes, right? We keep the minutes on record.
Well, we put them in laser, they're filed.
Yeah, they're...
They're filed with the city clerk's office, yes.
You file the minutes as well, but the resolutions first. Yeah, but...
Do the minutes get filed before or after we approve the minutes?
After.
After. However...
But the decision's filed before.
Yeah, but let's say, let's say Dave had edits to a resolution.
Which Dave? That Dave?
Dave Jensen.
Yep.
If Dave Jensen had comments and edits to a resolution, and, or he was on vacation and didn't sign a resolution and it didn't get filed with the clerk, but the minutes got filed, the minutes would start the clock. They incorporate the decision, therefore they start it.
So one or the other could start the clock.
One or the other could. So applicants or neighbors, attorneys, they, everyone needs to pay attention to what's going on. There's no, you know, we say our common practice, but you can't hang your hat on that, you know, someone can't write, submit a document saying, "Well, the city of Beacon zoning board attorney said that this is what happens." You know, what actually happened is what's going to count. You know, and if it is the minutes that are going to start the statute of limitations, then the minutes have to meet the requirements, like, you know, showing the vote of each member.
Right.
Like not this month's.
Which, and this month did not.
Exactly. So there would be an argument that the minutes this month would not start the statute of limitations because they don't reflect how every board member voted, or actually even the decision on that application.
Yeah.
But we have filed the resolution, so. All right.
Ah, so the thing the public should learn from this is that once we hold a meeting and there's been a decision, if they have to appeal, if they want to start that appeal ASAP, not count on when it's going to get filed or whatever, because...
And 30 days goes...
It goes fast.
It goes fast.
Right, right.
You know, but, and I think it's more important for us to be on top of, you know, being efficient with finalizing the resolutions and getting the materials to Amanda and getting, or Dave and getting them back to OLA. All right, I think we have time for...
Pickett?
One more case example. Yes, Pickett. The zoning board of appeals of the town of Tustin granted a use variance on August 22, 1989 to allow the construction of a septic waste transfer station in a residential subdivision in Sullivan County.
Okay.
In this, you know, you've got to add in the fun...
I wouldn't want to be on that.
You've got to add the fun details in.
Yes.
In this case, the applicable minutes were not timestamped. In support of its motion to dismiss, the ZBA submitted various invoices and affidavits from parties with knowledge of the date of filing, including affidavits from the town clerk and the ZBA secretary. Was that information enough to start the clock? Was the information submitted by the ZBA attesting to the fact that yes, these were actually filed? Was that good enough to start the statute of limitations?
Hundred percent.
So the Third Department held that the evidence provided sufficiently established the dates the minutes were filed, which were more than 30 days before the challenges by the petitioners were initiated. For purposes of calculating the period for seeking review of these determinations, delivery of the minutes of meetings to the town clerk is equivalent to filing the decision, so as to trigger the 30-day appeal provision. So a mere delivery of the meeting minutes reflecting the Board's vote to the municipal clerk is equivalent to filing the decision, even though an applicant is unaware of the delivery of the minutes to the clerk, and even though no copy of the minutes is mailed to the applicant. It's interesting in my position because, you know, my firm does work on both sides, representing applicants, representing boards, and, you know, some of the laws we appreciate and some are frustrating. It's definitely not necessarily fair, but there's a lot of pressure on the applicant or anyone who wants to file an Article 78 to stay on top of it. Because as you're seeing in these cases, it's not consistent. So, you know, making sure you're following up with the clerk because that's what starts the clock. What's getting there first, the minutes or the decision? And then that's when you, you know, you need to know. Even if it's not timestamped, even if it's not mailed to you, even if it's not, if it's a decision without the vote, that'll all start the clock. So I guess I have 7:30 on the dot on my watch, so we'll take a pause. Don't worry, guys, to be continued.
You can, you can on that.
[laughing]
Can't wait.
Come on. You put, I put the boring ones up front, they get more interesting.
All right. Well...
Wasn't that bad?
Let's go ahead and get this underway then. As a preliminary or as a first matter before we open up any public hearings, I went over the minutes from the last meeting and have some revisions which...
It's like your hypothetical.
I shared with the...
Why do I always... I said it was like your hypothetical.
Which I shared with the...
I think you said...
Elena Montes. And could we have a motion to adopt the minutes from the last meeting as amended?
Make a motion to adopt the minutes as amended.
I have a question. When I read the minutes, I didn't see the votes or the decisions in my copy of the minutes.
Yeah, that's one of the things I added in, and I didn't pass it over because you weren't at the meeting, so I figured you would probably abstain from voting, but...
Okay, so if you know that, that the minutes weren't in there and they're going to be amended, I just have no notation of that at all, so. No problem.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion by Montes.
Second.
Second by Elaine, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And will be mailed revised minutes?
I'm sorry, what?
Will be, the rest of the Board will be given minutes that are actually right?
Oh, sure. Here, for right now, just take a look at the, you can see what revisions I made.
I think your question is, are they going to be revised and ressent out to us?
That's it, yeah.
Yeah. Can you be...
Is it Amanda, right?
Yeah, Amanda, I'm sorry. Can you be sure to email those updated minutes out to everyone on the Board? Okay.
Yeah, Judy, I don't think we'll mail hard copies, is electronic email, okay?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Email sufficient. Thank you.
Okay, so I think if that's all, we should...
So this guy?
We should...
So can you just make sure she gets the amendments?
Oh, yeah, I'll give them to her.
Yeah, so we can make sure that...
Just pass them down right now.
...it's changed correctly.
Yodoki.
And what I'll actually do, Amanda, we can talk about this afterwards, but when you get the minutes together for this meeting or the first draft of them, let's take a look at them real quick before the meeting, just because you're understandably getting up dispute on doing this, so. All right, so if that's all we have...
Yes.
I think we should have a motion to open up the public hearing on agenda item number one.
Motion?
Motion by Board Member Hogg. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we are into the public hearing on the application submitted by Scott Ramsey and Brian Donnelly, 18 North Walnut Street with regard to an accessory structure, accessory structures and an accessory apartment. Go for it.
Thank you all so much for your time. I'm Scott Ramsey from 18 North Walnut Street.
And I'm Brian Donnelly.
So do we have presentations we should be looking at on the Board? What would be helpful for you all in this conversation? You have the architectural plans, yeah?
We have the application that you submitted, a memorandum from the planning board, and then two drawings, one showing layouts and one showing the actual as-built structures.
Yes, yes. Yeah, I think we've got elevations in there as well.
Thank you.
So basically what we are planning to build is this accessory apartment for Scott...
You need to use the microphone, really close.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Planning to build an accessory apartment in the back of our house, behind our house, for Scott's mother, who is here today. And, you know, we're interested in having a larger footprint for that, for that accessory apartment, given the limitations in terms of lot coverage, so. So the lot coverage allowed for our district and our zone is 720 square feet for the entire lot. And this accessory apartment, we're going to remove the third bay of our garage and use some of that square footage and put it towards the accessory apartment, which would take it up to 858 square feet total for the whole lot. The accessory apartment itself, I think, comes in at 448. Do you have it on your, on your plans?
Can I just jump in for a second? It's not lot coverage, it's total cumulative, it's where flow for the accessory apartments.
Right.
Right.
That's what the variance is for.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, that's what it says here.
Thank you, thank you.
So I did have one question, which doesn't actually go to your application directly, but I don't know if either Drew or Dave or anyone else up here does know. The local, there's a local law that governs accessory apartments. City Council amended it with regard to minimum and maximum square footage for an accessory apartment in June of 2020. And the original law that they were amending was passed in 1989, which you can't get a copy of from the online Department of State application. So what I was curious about was currently what it says is that for an accessory apartment that's located, or a second apartment, accessory apartment that's located in an accessory building as opposed to in the primary building, it's a minimum of 300 square feet and a maximum of 600 square feet. I would be curious to know what that requirement was before that most recent amendment.
Oh, I can actually tell you.
Okay, good.
I'm going to just need a second. Because it was adopted in 2020...
Well, no, but I'm saying night...
No, I know, I know.
Yeah.
Yes, don't worry, I got it.
Um, so I mean, basically what I'm getting at is what direction is the city... The most recently enacted piece of law here that contains, back up one step. We've got a schedule of regulations that governs accessory buildings. One of the restrictions that's stated in that is that total square footage in R1.5 and R1.7.5 of all accessory buildings isn't supposed to be more than 720 square feet.
Right.
Overlaid on that, more recently, we have enacted a law that says, or at least amended a law, that says accessory apartments, when permitted, are supposed to be a minimum of 300 and a... three hundred and a maximum of six hundred feet, and I'm wondering if the history of how that revision was made gives us any insight into where City Council wants this to be going with regard to effectively upping previous restrictions to accommodate accessory apartments.
The law that was adopted in nineteen eighty-nine for accessory apartments states, um, with relation to apartment size, that the minimum floor area for an accessory apartment within a detached, single-family dwelling shall be four hundred square feet, the maximum floor area shall be six hundred fifty square feet, but in no case shall the floor area of the apartment exceed thirty percent of the total floor area of the dwelling building in which it is located. For accessory apartments located in an accessory building, the minimum floor area shall also be three hundred square feet and the maximum shall be six hundred square feet.
So, no change, basically?
Yeah.
For, for, in the context of what we're looking at, all right. I, I, go, go ahead.
So, this is saying that the cumulative square footage, the accessory building is seven hundred and twenty, right?
Right.
But you're saying it's really not, that's not really.
Well, no, that's definitely what it says, but I was wondering if.
I know what it says, but it, that, the law does not say that. This says that, but the law does not say that.
No, no, the law does say that. What I was wondering was when, so that, within the past two years, the city has amended the provision that sets the minimum and maximum square footage for accessory apartments specifically.
Yeah.
As opposed to all accessory buildings overall, and I was curious as to effectively whether they were amending that in a manner that indicated they wanted to up square footage allowances for accessory apartments.
Right.
And then the answer is they, it doesn't indicate one way or the other, any preference going in that direction, or at least that's how I would construe it. So, sorry, I didn't mean to make that hyper-technical, but, um. Okay, one other question I just had. What was the, what was the rationale coming up with the proposed structure here of, because I know you've got the existing three, you know, three-car garage.
Yeah.
Of basically taking out a third of it and then building a second building as opposed to, say, one combined building or whatever?
Yeah, it was sort of everything we're talking about, right? And Dave was kind enough last year to come over and sort of look at the space with us and start to think about what makes sense from a square footage perspective, what's reasonable within the zone and, and the area. Um, and then we just decided we wanted to keep the garage separate as a functional garage, um, and, you know, we even toyed with turning that into the apartment, but we want the garage space, um, but we decided just to get rid of the third bay and use that square footage to then go towards the accessory apartment, which would be a separate building.
We'll definitely have three, well.
So, you'll have the house, you'll have the garage that's set off to the right in the back, right?
Exactly.
And then where's the side of building?
The, the accessory apartment sits in the back, sort of northeast corner of our lot.
So, behind the house, that you wouldn't be able to see from looking at it where I look at it?
Exactly, yeah. It's back in the back corner.
Right next to the garage, okay.
And aesthetically, they will, the, the garage and the accessory apartment will, will look almost very similar and tie in together, so they won't seem like too different. It all makes sense within the context of a lot.
Have you considered going to a one or a one and a half car garage?
No, it'll still be a two-car garage, because right now it's three.
Yeah, I, I know that, but have you thought about that? Then you wouldn't run into this limitation.
Um, we'd prefer to keep the two-car garage since we'll essentially need three parking spaces, um, for what we understand to be the requirement of the lot with the additional accessory apartment.
Well, you have the parking of the driveway, and then there's asphalt parking between the house and the accessory apartment, so there's parking there also.
Right, right.
And if you took off one of the garages, you'd have another, you could have another parking space there.
Well, but once we take the square footage of the garage off, the new apartment where it's going to sit will essentially take over probably about at least a quarter or half of that space. If you look on the site plan, I think the, um, outline of where the garage is now is there versus where the accessory apartment is going to sit.
And just another quick question.
Sure.
You need to use the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. When the house was sold, when you bought it, it was listed as a two-family.
It was, yeah, it was multi-family.
But on the, uh, property card, it's listed as one kitchen. Are you still using it as a two-family?
We're not, actually. We just took out the upstairs kitchen and we converted it to a single-family, again, with the.
There's a, there's a building permit and a CO to be issued shortly. We, we went ahead in advance, um, to do the permit, which would issue the CO, so that this would be a single-family house for this application and not a two-family, so that was addressed.
Thank you.
Um, so how long has it been since the property was actually used as a, as a two-family house?
We bought it in June of two thousand and eighteen, so four years ago is when we moved in, and, um, we assumed fairly close to that, there were renters in there. Uh, it was used as an income property for the previous owner.
Okay. Lost the use anyway.
Over four years.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was gonna say, so whatever else is going on at this point, I mean.
Single-family.
Yeah, it's the, the prior non-conforming ex, exemption's been lost, so it, right?
Yeah.
Drew, do you still have that prior version of the accessory building law up in front of you?
Uh, um, no, I can get it real quick, though.
Okay, sorry, I just, I just, something just occurred to me.
Okay, Dave, I have it.
Okay, so that language for an accessory apartment located in an accessory building, did the prior, the minimum floor area shall be three hundred square feet and the maximum shall be six hundred square feet, did the prior version then say, except that the planning board may permit a smaller or larger accessory apartment where appropriate in an existing accessory building, blah, blah, blah?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Did you guys speak to, um, what will go where the former third bay, uh, was?
Yeah, so if you look on the site plan, sort of as I was addressing earlier with Elaine, it, the accessory apartment is going to go back in that corner. So, where that third bay was, I think if you look on the plan, this, the accessory apartment sort of cuts in maybe into like a third or maybe even a half.
So, just, so I'm looking at, so the green, the green is the proposed apartment, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what, what will be, what will be in the gap? I guess is my question.
We'll probably do some landscaping or, um, you know, we've talked about a Japanese-style garden, for example, um, something very aesthetically pleasing.
The, the plan is not to pave it, is what you're saying?
Absolutely not, no. Definitely not.
Thank you.
Good question.
Yeah, well, all right, so I should, I. All right, well, I will just make a note here, so that it's, at least in the minutes, um, we, we did get a memo from the planning board dated April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. At their last meeting, the planning board reviewed an application for a special use permit and site approval, or site plan approval for an accessory apartment at eighteen North Walnut Street, submitted by Brian Donnelly and Scott Ramsey. The applicant's proposed to do a partial demolition of an existing garage and construct a four hundred and eighty-eight square foot accessory apartment in the backyard of our single-family house. Section two twenty-three seventeen E of the city zoning code permits seven hundred and twenty square feet of maximum cumulative lot coverage, and the applicant is proposing seven hundred and fifty square feet. Board members, board members reviewed the, reviewed the proposal and af, after careful consideration of the variance needed, voted unanimously to send a positive recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. As always, the final decision will be based on the review of the application, but the planning board felt the aforementioned factors should be offered as an advisory review point, and as, as Chach Hill was, I think, just starting to say, it's eight hundred and fifty-eight square feet.
They corrected it online when I, I was looking at something else earlier today, and the seven fifty has been changed to eight fifty.
Okay.
In the memo.
It was a, it was a typo that we, we caught, so the materials online have been updated.
Okay. All right, well, does anybody, does anybody else have any further questions? Should we see if there's anybody here?
Yeah, that's here for the public.
Speak, speak on this?
I have no questions.
All right, well, so then let me ask, uh, is there anybody here who would like to make a comment or be heard on this application?
From the public?
Teresa Kraft. I spoke in support of this project at the planning board meeting. Looking at the architectural plan submitted with this application, I believe this is exactly the type of quality-designed accessory apartment one would hope to see from other applicants that come before this city. This project is only seeking a hundred and thirty-eight square foot variance, and best of all, the main dwelling is owner-occupied, plus the applicant is reducing the overall footprint of these existing garage. I don't think this build will change the character of that neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Kraft. Is there anybody else who could, who would like to be, would like to speak?
Well, primarily, I have a question.
Name of the address, please.
Suzanne Moss, and my property borders, their property, the back of my property is along the edge of maybe three-quarters of their property in the back, and, um, I have a view from my second-floor bedroom that I treasure. I can see a sliver of the graveyard, and that is very important to me, and I can't tell how high this new room is going to be and whether or not it's going to block my view of the graveyard. I think it doesn't go far enough, uh, west in order to block my view, but I can't tell for sure, and there don't, there doesn't seem to be any indication on the plans that I can see as to high, how high it will be. Is it going to be higher than, I have a garage that's blocking some of the view that's already there, and I have a feeling, I suspect it's not going to be a problem, but does anyone know how high the building is going to be?
Well, according to the plans, it looks like ten foot, one inch. I think that's the back. Ten foot, one inch, and then there's a sloped-up roof line.
How high is the slope up? Because the back doesn't affect me at all.
Eight?
It's only the front of the garage that affects me.
So, maybe the applicant can speak to this drawing here. I'm not sure if that's the front or the side. When I look at it, it looks like I'm looking at a side view over here.
It does go up in ten feet to the front, but I don't have that in front of my head.
Is it eleven eight?
It probably is eleven eight.
Eleven feet, eight inches?
Yes.
And that's high, that's how high it will be across the whole front? It's not going to go up higher or, that's the maximum height? So, I have to go there with a tape measure? Because I don't, I can't tell. How high is the garage as it stands now?
Nine foot, four inches.
So, this is going to be?
I was quick, where did you see that?
Two feet, it looks like, two.
Two feet higher?
Oh, I'm so bad at.
Well, I'm not sure. If I'm reading this properly.
It is, it is definitely higher than the garage.
If I read these plans properly, this is a side-by-side, the top of the garage is equal to the top of the rear of the structure, and then there's a slope up on the roof.
Well, I'm only concerned with the front because the back, I can't see.
So, it does look like it's slightly higher than the garage?
What is slightly? One yard, twenty yards?
There's no indication on the drawing, ma'am.
I need to know.
It's saying, proposed is going to be eleven feet, eight inches. What it is now is nine feet, four inches.
Eight feet, eleven.
So, if you do that subtraction, eleven, eight.
Please do the math.
Nine, four, I'm trying. I'm not the best mathematician, believe me, man. So, it's two, it, it looks to me like two, two feet, four inches.
It is, is it that much? That's not.
Dave, am I right?
Sorry, I didn't hear the question.
I'm saying it's, at one point, the, the height is going to be two feet, four inches higher than what is existing now.
Than the front of the garage?
Yes. Front edge. Yeah.
So, I really don't know. I have to go measure. You know, I have to see, I mean, I can't explain why that view is so important to me, but it is very important to me, and it's one of the reasons I bought my house. I can only see it from my bedroom.
Views, views are not guaranteed continuous, and if someone is within their rights on their property, sometimes you lose part of your view. And even if you don't like it.
We have all lost the view of Mount Beacon from a number of overly gigantic tall buildings on Main Street and in the area.
And you try to keep it within a, a minimum, you know, so what, is there a structure height, uh, maximum, Dave?
Fifteen feet, so this.
So, it's well within.
This building is well within the code, the code.
So, he's by right allowed to do this?
Well.
Well.
No?
Not, he's here for a lot cover, coverage variance, or he's, so he's not by right permitted to build this exact structure. He could build, uh, a structure that would be a hundred and thirty-eight square feet la, smaller at this height, and he could put it in this, you know, in the, in the front location that could potentially still block the view. That would be as of right, but this exact proposal is not fair to say it's as of right because he is here for the variance, but it's a lot coverage variance, not related to height. But now you're thinking of, you know, positioning of the, of the accessory apartment on the, on the, on the lot, you know? But you're right, the height aspect of it is fifteen feet maximum, and he's in, within that.
It seems to me, though, that it doesn't matter what the height is, uh, it doesn't matter if it destroys my view. Is that what you're telling me?
I think what, I don't mean to put words in her mouth, but I'll say from my words, I think the variance here is not on the height, it's on the square footage that we're evaluating here. Within the height, he is within code. What we're addressing here is the square footage of the structure.
Well, what about other persons like myself who lives in, in Beacon?
Everyone will take that in consideration in their evaluation and vote.
Okay, I mean, if I could see.
Every case is determined individually.
Oh.
So, everyone will take that in consideration as they evaluate and determine their vote on this.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anybody else who would like to be heard on this, uh, application? All right, well. What, what, what do we want to do with this? Specifically, should we, we close in the public hearing and having a discussion and vote on this?
Well, I think before you close the public hearing, I'd have a, I'd have a discussion because I don't know if the board feels that there's a need, i, if the board feels that they would like additional information, um, in response to that, the comment that was raised, you'd want to keep the public hearing open while that, you know, information is submitted to the board. But if you're satisfied with what's before you and feel comfortable rendering a decision, at that point, I'd close the public hearing, but maybe have the discussion first so you know if you're satisfied with the information in front of you.
All right, so, is anyone volunteering to, uh?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Elaine, I can't hear you.
Well, wait, no, before we do that, why don't we discuss what, what we think about this application right now, and then. this application right now and then decide if we want to, want to close the hearing.
Well, I, I have no further questions, and I'm ready to go through the factors on the application.
Okay, well, here's one observation I've got, which I was somewhat getting at before, but we've got several different overlaid requirements here. We, the accessory apartment provision in the city code says three hundred to six hundred square feet. We're within that. The schedule of regulations that applies to accessory buildings says, has a list of requirements, yard requirements, ma, uh, maximum square footage of the accessory building requirements based on the size of the primary structure, and then as well, there's simply a stated limit on how much square feet all of the accessory buildings on a lot can be. The apparent purpose of that is to effectively make sure that accessory structures don't take over the lot in relation to primary structures.
Right.
Um, the section of the city code that governs accessory buildings says, with regard to detached garages and other accessory buildings, they need to comply with this, you know, the schedule of regulations, the document that has grids and side yard requirements, et cetera, and it also must meet the following additional requirements, list five, one of those five is, in no case shall the total square footage of all accessory buildings exceed the limits established in the schedule of regulations, which seems to be an indication that in putting these provisions in place, the city was particularly concerned about making sure that that maximum square footage restriction was being followed. Now, at the same time, I know that there's been a lot of, a significant amount of discussion in city council recently, in substance, going to the interest in trying to make accessory dwelling units more available, which would potentially be something that would be suggesting that, well, maybe we should be looking at this differently. That's basically what I, what, what, what my own take on it is, which kind of makes it a somewhat difficult question. Like, it's, oh, the application seems like a nice idea, and it does seem consistent with that interest or intent in trying to promote additional dwelling units.
I think what the city council may or may not do isn't relevant yet because they haven't done it.
Right.
Took the words out, Adam, out of my mouth.
Yeah, and when I'm, what I was trying to say is, what I'm looking at here is that there's a seven hundred and twenty square-foot allowance, and the petitioner is requesting a variance so that they could have eight hundred and fifty-eight square feet. So to me, I'm looking at a difference of, of just the square feet. I'm not looking at height, but it's within the height variances, and that's what I was speaking to, that it's within the height allowances. What I'm looking at is that we're just looking for another one hundred and thirty-eight?
That is correct.
That's what I'm looking at as the board of what we're allowed to, to look at.
Do we have the total percentage of that change versus the lot, the total lot square footage?
Yeah, that was in, at least in the, at least in the, it was twenty-seven point something percent, and thirty, twenty-seven point four percent now, thirty-one point four percent as proposed.
Right.
Just, just over three percent?
Just over thirty percent.
Three percent change, I mean.
Or three, uh, just over four, about a four percent change, exactly.
Okay.
And I suppose one thing that should also be noted is, this, this is R one-five zoning district, minimum five thousand square-foot lot size, and we've got a sixty-five hundred square-foot lot. Now, at the same time, even in R one-seven point five, which is the seventy-five hundred minimum lot size zoning area, it's still a seven hundred and twenty square-foot maximum for accessory buildings.
Right. So what we're being asked to decide is just this one hundred and thirty-eight square-foot additional space, if I'm not incorrect?
That's right.
Right?
Yeah, that's, that's exactly right.
We're not looking at height, we're not looking at it, it, it meets the, the, the requirements for, right, for the lot coverage and all that? So the only thing they're asking for is a hundred and thirty-eight square feet?
You're going down a rabbit hole here, that the variance is, is very specific.
Yeah, it's right here, right?
It has nothing to do with height.
Okay, so that's.
Has nothing to do with anything except the seven twenty versus the eight fifty-eight for one hundred and thirty-eight square feet over the code requirement.
Okay. That's what I thought.
So I think there was a motion before that we didn't address.
Elaine, Elaine has a motion on the table to close the public hearing.
To do what?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Oh.
Second.
All right, well, so we have a motion to close the public hearing. Let's just, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Give me just one moment here. Do we not have the, are you, I'm just looking for the resolution, the draft resolution?
Um, Jordan, it's, it's posted on, online, on the application online.
I'll, I'll, I'll find it. All right, so, sorry, I was just pulling up the draft resolution.
Yeah. Do you want it in a word version?
No. Thanks. Okay, so what I'll do is, I will walk the discussion through our statutory factors here. Um, overall, we are considering the benefit to the applicant if the variance is granted weighed against a detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant, and in doing so, we are considering five factors specified in the general city law, the first of one, one being whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of, of the area variance. What, what do we think about this?
No.
Well, we do have the detriment if it, if, if it blocks the view of one of the neighbors. That's the detriment we're.
It's not the question.
Has been presented to us, correct?
Yeah, it's.
We don't have any other detriment.
The, the problem is, with all due respect, that's only got, at best, an oblique relationship to this stated limit for accessory buildings. I mean, you could be building one hundred and thirty-eight square feet and still be in a footprint that would have the exact same.
Exactly. That's what I was trying, obviously, inarticulately, to explain to the, to the person from the public who'd be affected. That's what I was trying to say.
Okay, second factor, unless anybody else has, has anything on the, on our first factor, whether the benefit the applicant seeks can be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue that does not require the area variance. Okay, we're talking about practicalities here, so where are we starting out with?
Um, I think if they removed one garage bay, they wouldn't have an issue.
I can't understand. Can you repeat that?
If they removed one garage bay, they would not have an issue.
A second garage, left, two garage bays total.
So if they took away two of the garage bays and just left one, is that what you're saying, Elaine?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we're kind, we're kind of playing Tetris at that point. I guess for the purposes of this question, that is true. They could achieve their, assuming if their benefit that they're hoping to achieve, I, you know, if you frame that as the ability to construct this apartment, then they could achieve it without the variance by removing the second garage bay. So I, I think if you frame it that way, then the answer is yes, they could achieve it through another feasible method.
I mean, I, I think they're here for not just that, but to keep the two garages. So, yes, they can achieve it by going smaller in the accessory apartment, but to me, this is not substantial enough to be concerned about that, so I'm not so concerned with that question.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I, I thought this was actually a good factor for discussion because I'm not really sure how it actually weighs here. I mean, we're, we're starting out with a, with a three-bay garage, um, the benefit they're seeking is to also have an accessory apartment.
Right, I mean, you could also frame it that they want an accessory apartment with a two, with a two-car garage, and then, and then the answer is no.
That's an accurate way of putting it.
Yeah, it depends on how you frame the question.
So couldn't they, couldn't they also do it by building another story above the three bays?
No, they, they, that would.
That would go over the height?
Well, it's not over the height, it's that one of the overarching accessory, accessory building regulations is that a second story can only be used for storage, and we've, we've got a fifteen-foot overall height requirement.
So then the answer to that is no, okay.
David, unless I say anything wrong here, please jump in and tell me I'm wrong.
That's correct, second floor is storage-only.
Okay.
Um, okay, as to whether the requested variance is substantial.
I do not feel it's substantial.
I don't think it's substantial.
No, I think, you said it was just over four percent change, I think that that is, is not substantial.
I agree with that.
Well, albeit the dissenting voice here, see, I, I do think it's substantial because I, I, I find it hard to read that seven hundred and twenty square-foot restriction as something other than a hard and fast statement that they're looking to control the total amount of accessory building footprint that is on a lot. As to whether the alleged difficulty is self-created.
It is.
Did we miss one?
Yes, it's self-created.
Well, okay, every application that comes before us is self-created in the extent to the extent to which were not, someone not proposing to change the status quo, they would be here, and it's to that extent self-created. Beyond that baseline consideration, is there some reason here we think this is self-created? I mean, they're starting out with an existing three-car garage.
They're losing one bay.
Again, it's self-created because they're, they want the accessory apartment, and they also want a two-car garage. That makes, in and of itself, makes it self-created.
I know you're pitching.
Nobody wants to hear from me on this one.
So we all agree it's self-created?
Well.
No?
I don't know if Dave agrees. I, I think they're all self-created.
Right.
Most, not, not all.
Almost all of them.
Yeah.
The, the thing with self-creation, I think that is our big thing, is someone coming into the city, buying a property that is smaller, that is different than what they actually want, and knowing that it doesn't fit what they want, and buying it anyway, and then thinking that they should by rights get a variance, which, that, then they can't. That's what I think of as more or less self-created in a neg, more negative way. But I, I agree with Jordan that they're pretty much all self-created.
Well, yeah, and I, I mean, I guess that's kind of what I'm getting at, it, they pretty much all are self-created, um.
It's not a weighty.
Is, is, is this a situation where something is going on where in the, in the big picture, we would be concerned about effectively rewarding a course of conduct that we wouldn't actually want to encourage people to engage in?
Right.
Maybe, maybe that would be a good way of putting it.
It's a great way of putting it, what I wanted to say.
Um, let me ask one question as well. With regard to that prior factor, the character of the neighborhood and detriment to nearby properties, does it make any sense for us to consider the fact that this was previously a two-family, um, primary structure in a single-family neighborhood?
Yeah, I think that is a good consider, I'm sorry, Jordan.
No, go, go ahead.
I think it is a good consideration because you're lessening the impact, since it was already a two-family. So now it's going to be owner-occupied, there's going to be a relative in the property, as opposed to a two-family that could be completely rented to two different entities, and there wouldn't need be any requirement for owner-occupied. And owner-occupied is something that we really value.
I think that'd be a relevant point if they had the ability to turn it into a two-family, but they don't, they've lost that right, so it's irrelevant.
What it was in the past is not.
Sure.
I mean, it could have been any number of things before it was a two-family, how, how far back you want to go.
Right, right.
Um, right now, it's a one-family.
Okay, I think we beat that up. Do we talk about number four?
We kind of just, we kind of just touched on it. Not in full, though.
Oh, you know, you're right, we did skip over that.
What was number four?
I'm sorry. Um, the, the fourth consideration, which I skipped over, was whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the phys, physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, which, given this restriction we're talking about, might actually be the most significant factor.
I don't see how it would have an adverse event, effect, excuse me, or impact.
I agree.
I, I, I think it goes back to substantial, which I, I know, Dave, you disagree with, but I just, I don't think that the change is substantial, um, relative to the total size of the, of the lot. I don't think that, um, I don't think it will be, you know, noticeable from the perspective of the amount of building that is on the lot.
I don't think it'll have an adverse effect on the neighborhood. My concern, which really has nothing to do with what's addressed here, so it really doesn't, is the amount of impermeable coverage on a lot, but that really doesn't come into any of this or any of the questions. In terms of whether it'll, it'll have an adverse effect on the neighborhood, that neighborhood is pretty tight as it is. I, I don't, the way it's set behind the house, I don't think it's going to affect the neighborhood adversely.
I, I don't, I don't.
I didn't even hear it, so.
What's that?
I can't really hear when she, what her concern was, I'm sorry, I can't hear what she's saying. Can you tell me what she said?
Well, yeah, that she, in, in some substance, doesn't think it'll have an adverse effect, impact.
She doesn't think it'll have an adverse effect, though, okay.
Um, I, I, I don't think so either. Um, I mean, when we're talking about physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood overall, it, it seems like it's within the scope of our consideration to go, okay, look, this used to be a two-family house, we've got a lawn place that allow, that allows for accessory apartments. This seven hundred and twenty square-foot restriction, the apparent purpose of this is to avoid having accessory buildings effectively take over a lot. On the specific facts presented here, I don't really see the grant, granting this variance getting significantly in front of that purpose, but I wouldn't want to set a precedent of that. Maybe that's a good way of putting it. Maybe that's a good way of putting it.
I think, given that it's a little bit larger than a 5,000-square-foot minimum lot, and the fact that it was a two-family permit, permitted use, and that it's, as Jordan called out, that it's a small percentage, and I don't think it's too substantial.
So unless somebody has something else, we should probably have a motion.
I make a motion to grant the variance pending the restrictions we put on every variance.
Right. A motion by Councilmember Fatskiris?
Curtis.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Chacho. All in favor, I will start at this end. Ms. Chacho?
Aye.
Mr. Fats...
Aye.
Mr. Hogg?
Aye. Curtis for the record.
Aye.
Okay. And Ms. Smith?
Aye.
All right, and I will also vote in favor of granting the variance. Just one final note before we close this up. Normally, we put restrictions on variances, which are already included in this draft, that you will apply for a construction permit within six months, commence construction within six months after that, and complete construction and obtain a CO, although I don't think we need a CO here. Do we?
Yes, they'll need a CO.
Sorry. Commence construction and obtain a CO within 24 months after the date of permit issuance. Second, that before the permits or certificates of occupancy are issued, all fees that are required to the city will be paid. Just wanted to ask, is there any issue at this point with complying with those constructions or those conditions, in particular, the timeline?
No.
Okay. Okay, so then, yeah, the variance is granted, and we should have it in the office by Friday if you want to come pick it up.
Please leave a mail out.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. So I think the next matter is to open up the public hearing on agenda item number two.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Hogg. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fatskiris?
Yep.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. All right. If the applicant is here, that is Thomas Butler, or I don't know if someone else is speaking.
Yeah, my architect.
Okay.
Come on, say hi. Hi, I'm Thomas Butler, resident of 97 Union Street, and my architect will speak to describe the parameters of the project, and you can ask me questions as well.
Okay, thank you.
I am Joe DiMarco, project manager for Welland Architecture. So basically, what we're proposing for 97 Union Street is a 224-square-foot addition to the second floor of the existing home. It will be constructed on four new columns with a covered porch below, with access to the covered porch from the first floor. And on the second floor, we are proposing a new home office. The architectures will match the existing residence, and with that, in keeping the addition in line with the width of the existing house, we're just requesting a variance of 8.3 feet where 10 feet is required.
Just for the record, the variance is not 8.3 feet.
1.7, yeah.
Yeah, 1.7.
Depending on how you want to state it.
Yeah. Everything else within the zoning requirements meet the requirements, except for the width of the lot being, I think, 43 feet where 50 feet is required, which is existing, non-conforming.
And this is, will be effectively replacing the back porch that's currently there, right?
Right. Yep. Yep, there's a deck there now, which that will be demoed, and then a new deck will be constructed with a patio beneath the proposed office on the second floor.
If we were to tell you no, and you had to do something that didn't need the 1.7-foot variance, what would that realistically look like?
I mean, I suppose we could just move the one wall in two feet, so we're not crossing over the setback line. But that would be like a last resort.
Yeah, that would kind of look a little weird.
Yeah.
The addition is in line with the rest of the building, correct?
Correct, yep.
But the lot is hanging?
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, that's it. Yes, minimal.
Yeah, the house actually, as it is, is already over the setback line.
It may not be exactly over the line, so it's pretty close.
The existing footprint.
Right.
Let's see here. I didn't look this up myself, but do you know when this lot was originally subdivided?
I don't know. I don't know if...
Do you know when the lot was originally subdivided? No.
You know what year the house was built?
The original part of the house was 1870.
Can you use the microphone?
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
I believe when I purchased the house, the date of the construction of the front part of the house was 1870, and then the, an addition that was put on the back of it, I'm not sure exactly when that was built. Maybe the 80s, but it was several owners before I purchased the house.
But the bottom line is, we're talking about a structure that dates back to well before the 1964 adoption of the building code.
Exactly. Yeah, that's why it's so close to my neighbor's property line, yeah. And the deck that's going to be removed, and where the patio, where the patio is, that deck is actually a larger footprint than the back of the house. Like, it extends even closer to the property line. So I'm essentially taking away a structure that's even closer. Again, I didn't build that deck. That deck was there prior to my purchasing of the house.
And I guess just the one other thing I'd note that seems like a potentially material consideration is, well, this lot is both in a regularly shaped lot, and while it's lacking in that width, 43 feet versus 50 feet, it is like 220 feet versus the required minimum depth of 100 feet. So part of the issue here is we have a previous non-conforming structure and presumably lot that, since general proposition, are exceeding minimal requirements, but...
Did you say the...
Because of the way things are subdivided, they've got, they're a little under on that width requirement, so...
Did you say the existing deck is actually larger than the proposed deck?
Yeah. Yeah. It extends like two feet closer to that property line.
Okay.
So I'd be removing that and keeping everything flush to the 8.7.
Yeah, the side of the house.
Okay.
Does anyone else have anything on this?
No.
No.
Unless you have anything else you want to say right now?
There was a letter, an email that was received from the neighbor whose property line I'm, I guess, encroaching on. I don't know if that should be read into the record or...
Is this from Doug Donaldson?
Doug Donaldson, yes.
Let me go ahead and read this in, and then I was, the next thing I was going to ask is whether anybody had come who wanted to speak on this. "I'm Doug Donaldson, the next-door neighbor at 101 Union Street of Thomas Butler, 97 Union Street. As a next-door neighbor and home closest to the requested variance, I support the proposed change, which would include a second-story rear addition and new deck and patio. This change aligns with the look and character of the neighborhood, doesn't affect our property, and would enhance the value of their property. I request the zoning board of appeals approve the variance for 97 Union Street at its May 17 meeting. For any further comments or questions, with contact information." All right. Is there anyone who wanted to speak on this as a member of the public? Mr. Powell?
Steyer.
Steyer, I'm sorry.
So I had a very nice conversation.
Just do one thing. Give your name and address to the microphone so they...
So my name is Mark Allen. Mark with a C, Allen, A-L-A-I-N. Steyer. Currently residing at 71 East Main Street, soon to be residing at the corner of Union and Russell, two houses away from the proposed petitioner's variance.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Oh, I can. I can speak with the microphone.
Thank you.
I've been before the Supreme Court, so if you want me to do that, we'll do that.
Great.
Fine. May it please the court. So, we had a very nice conversation today, my neighbor and myself. I had not, at that time, accessed my prospective property, which I'm closing on next week. And I have to say, the, there are many problems here, but they can be remedied. They're not a, I mean, I don't have a huge objection to a home office, but there is a lot non-conforming, but that goes back 60 feet. There is one structure on that property already, which appears to be a garage or shed, which would accommodate an office or be replaced for an office. A second-story addition is non-conforming with the neighborhood. I lived on Green Street for two years. No one in the neighborhood has bulked up their property like this. So my first concern is the precedent it sets. This is an approval required for a variance, not a request for something like a milk delivery. It's discretionary, within your discretion. Why discretion? But it's not a request that is within the consistency of the predominant character of the building, buildings or area up by the mountain. In fact, I think someone earlier today, not 45 minutes ago, mentioned the Main Street constructions that blocked the view of Mount Beacon for people walking down Main Street. Although that's not a material consideration for this body, it's sort of the same thing. It would cut away one quarter of my view of the reason I moved and bought, or am buying the house that I'm buying for as much as I'm buying it for. The gentleman I spoke with today is very kind, very nice, and very well-meaning. I asked him if there was any alternative that he could conceive of to actually create that home office on the property. He said no. Basically, it's got to be a second floor. We ended it at that. So, it's not going to encroach on a wetland. It's not going to affect wildlife, the deer, the critters, the coyote, the rest. It's not near a state park, although damn close, but it may encroach on the sightlines for Beacon's namesake. I just want to leave that out there as a floating cloud. I know that's not enough to vote no. The water runoff, however, of the structure, because of where we are on the mountain, will affect the two adjacent structures and everything downhill, my house, the next-door neighbors. So where they actually had a natural aqua filter, I'm not sure what you call it, something that's...
Non-porous?
Something it takes in the water.
That is porous?
Yeah. Now, we're going to have something that pours it next door, down the hill, to my next-door neighbor, who's a firefighter from New York City, I believe, and then to my place, and then down Russell and down further. It simply doesn't comply with the shape of the neighborhood, and it's sort of a land grab. You want to make your property more profitable as a newcomer in 2018? Fine. Do it by putting a building at the back of your property. I've been here since 2017, looking to buy a place without changing any character of anything. That's also an eyesore for me, but again, not relevant to this body. Can the petitioner do something otherwise? Are there other less restrictive alternatives? Tons, including not even having this home office. Rent one in Beacon, at the Beacon Beehive. Or, because it's, if I'm not mistaken, a two-person family, use one of those wonderful rooms in the 1,800 square feet as an office. I'm not asking to put a wading pool in my backyard when I move in. I'm not going to put up a lighthouse that goes up four stories, although I may if this And I think that it is a substantial change to the neighborhood by someone who hasn't been here for long enough to know what the neighborhood looks like. So, if I need to, and I hope not to, I'll ask for an environmental impact statement from the state.
This is a type-two action, not subject to seeker.
Yeah, and I'm good friends with Tisha James, so we'll see. And I think that this is not the easiest solution. I took pictures of the backyard, I have photos of the structure. It's obviously a sort of, I want more, more, more. Why don't they just build a 60-foot structure all the way back to the end of the property? And by the way, it is, Counselor, subject to my petition to the state.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Between attorneys, if I make a petition and ask for an injunction, it'll happen.
Yes, you have the right to say... Yes, you have the right to sue, but it's not subject to an environmental impact statement.
Okay. I respect Ms. Gimmels' opinion, but I've been practicing law in this state for 35 years, and I moved up to Beacon not to have my view of the mountain decreased and not to have people from outside of this city, which I've been coming to since 2005 and staying in, ruined. That's already been happening. And again, if this happens, I'm going to be placing an application for a lighthouse on my property, on the corner of Russell and Union.
Well, that would be hypocritical.
But of course. It's actually, that's called hyperbolic bullshit. That's what lawyers do when they are trying to make a point.
Oh, thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
No.
I have one. The, okay, I assume, based on what you said, you looked over the plans that were submitted in conjunction.
Absolutely.
All right, so...
By the way, I'm sorry. I only learned about this variance request two days ago. I don't drive. I'm partly crippled. So, a friend drove me by, and then I saw what was being proposed, and I found it outrageous.
Well, this is what I wanted to ask you. We're on the same page that what's being asked for here is a 1.7-foot variance on the side yard requirement, right? If they, if we denied that, and they built a structure that effectively stepped in, not effectively, that stepped in 1.7 feet from the current side, but was otherwise the same structure...
By the way, I don't have any standing on that, so...
Well, would that address any of the concerns you've raised?
Putting it up on the second floor is increasing the property value for them. It's not a home office. And I'm not amused. All right? I've heard bullshit for years. I used to be a landlord-tenant attorney in the city, where we actually have real problems. This is an addition on the second floor. It may or may not turn out to be an office. It could easily be facilitated on the grounds of the property without rooting sightlines, encroaching on other people's property. And as a semi-employed or semi-retired attorney, it would be my pleasure to bring a petition to actually shut this down. Pleasure, because I'm bored, and I see the smile on, I would love to see her across the aisle.
Did you just say because you're bored? Did you just say because you're bored? Or did I hear that wrong?
No, 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 no. You heard that wrong.
Oh, good.
All right, so just give me something to work with here. Can you tell me how your concerns would be alleviated by...
Why is there a need to put a second-story on the back of a building that actually encroaches past the sightlines of the buildings on the block? Now, I realize sightlines are not the be-all and end-all, but it is nonconforming. It also, the runoff, the water runoff from that roof will, I wish the neighbors were actually here, pour into their yard, into their groundwater, and ultimately into my basement, as I've seen happen in nine places I've lived in five years.
Are you speculating, or you have an engineering study to back that statement up?
Nope, but I'll get one.
Okay. So come back with it. We'd love to hear it.
Well, I found out about this two days ago. I'm not trying to challenge you, sir. I'm just saying this is a completely outrageous addition.
Can I ask a question?
If this does not, if this does not touch our hearts and minds, that's fine. I'll be here to get a silo or, you know, a four-story lighthouse placed on my property and change the character of the neighborhood again.
I mean, we'll gladly evaluate every application as it comes, so...
I think it would be a waste of your time.
Irrelevant if this is on second story or first story. If it were cut back 1.7, this would be a non-issue, correct?
Would not be in front of the board. Permit would be issued. Project could get built.
Thank you very much for helping me understand.
Is there anybody else from the public? We don't even know. There may, there's a lot of people out there. There's people waiting to come on.
Oh, so I'm sorry. The questions that were answered in the application that were false are not relevant? I know that it wasn't noted.
Be specific. What are they?
Oh, I'll deal with that later.
Okay.
Very good.
Well, we've got to make decisions based on what the information that's in front of us now, so...
Yeah, well, some of the answers on that application are...
You said you were going to address it later, correct? You did just say that, right?
Again, it's your discretion.
It is.
It is. However, I would actually scrutinize all the yeses and no check boxes if I were you. If you don't think it's going to have a water runoff problem, I would have an examination of that by someone from the city before you decide.
Wouldn't a ground-floor addition, which you would be fine with, correct?
Yes.
That would have the same runoff if it had the same footprint, correct?
It would have to be at the back of the property.
That wouldn't obstruct your view.
Yes, it would have to ruin their 60 feet of backyard.
Yeah. I think we understand.
Yeah, well, that's fine. Again, I apologize for my aggressive tone. I just, I've had a long day.
Us too.
I was on the phone today with the Dutchess County Commission on civil, on human rights, which was a long conversation. So, do you have any questions for me? I'm sorry.
None for me.
No.
I think that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this application? Okay, anybody could ask you to please give your name and address, so we can record it in a minute.
Sure. My name's Brian Mencher. I live at 57 Vale Avenue. And in fairness and full disclosure, I'm also a licensed lawyer, but I will try to keep the hyperbolic tone down.
Aren't we all?
I come to you today as a neighbor that happens to live with a home facing the back of the applicant's home as well. I come here to speak as a Beacon resident since 2012, and in support of what I understand is a 1.7-foot variance. From my angle of my home, I can see the back of applicant's home, and if I understand a structure can be built 1.7 feet in and not flush from the existing part of the house, I would love to see something that's certainly more aesthetically pleasing from my viewpoint. So I'll just say that as a resident of the community, it feels like this kind of restrained addition is a smart addition. It's a welcome addition for Beacon, and it's something that I would support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa Kraft, Liberty Street. I believe every neighborhood in Beacon is battling the fear of being overbuilt, and we all wish we had friends in high places. I came here tonight in favor of this submission. I believe this application is requesting a small-square-foot variance of only 1.75 feet versus the overly-large relief we generally hear requested by other applications. And this is building within the original footprint of a larger deck. I don't see how this addition with the same height of the original structure changes the overall visuals. Will this really change the nature of the neighborhood? Without granting this variance, they still have the right to build a second floor, but 1.75 feet shallower. I say go for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, and while I know it's getting late...
Anybody else?
Yes, first of all, is there anybody else who wanted to speak? And then I would just, I don't know if the applicant wants to say anything else.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. And I don't know if you guys have any questions in, further questions for me? I didn't, you know, the issue of, I don't know if you want to know, like, the property, the lot that goes back to Vale is extremely narrow, so it wouldn't be feasible to build on the back of the property. I'd have, if I were trying to get a variance, I'd be like, I'd end up with about 10 feet. Like, I think the back measurement is about 30 feet wide at the very back, because at some point, the house next door bought like a third of my backyard, so it's like that really narrow space. Also, the second floor is serving, my backyard faces south, there's very little shade. I know there are other ways to create shade, but one of the benefits of having, creating a covered patio area. I assure you, it is only for the purpose of an office. Both my wife and I do a fair amount of work at home, and we discovered during COVID that it would be nice to have a little bit more space, and that is the reason I'm here. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Sorry. Mark Stier again. I don't oppose the notion of a separate office. I do oppose the notion of a second-story addition. I'm going to be living for as long as these folks are living here. I'm going to retire and die here. So, I don't know whether or not it's going to be an office. I don't know whether the people that buy the place are going to turn it into a romper room, but there is what they call narrow. I came from Jersey City. They have a backyard that is half of this room from where I'm standing. I don't know about the encroachment from the next-door neighbors. I have photographs taken today of that space, including the property, the building on the property that looks perfectly suited to be an office. In fact, I just canceled in February. I tried to buy a house in April. I had to cancel it because it was uninsurable, the large garage, on Talbot. So, again, I don't oppose your needs. I do oppose the means and the...
I think you've been clear. I think you've been very clear. I think we understand.
Just the choice of putting it up here as opposed to over here. That's all. And that's it.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that was communicated to my neighbor.
Thank you. Do we have, do we have anyone else? All right, then, I believe the two options right now are to close the public hearing or to adjourn the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
All right, I have a motion to close from Ms. Smith.
Second?
Second from Mr. Vetch Kirchis. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay.
Nay.
All right, let's, let's...
Go through that.
Let's talk about our statutory considerations here. All right, sorry, my apologies. I think I got logged out of my email. So, in considering the benefit to the applicant if the variance is granted as weighed against a detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant, our first consideration is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance.
I do not think there will be, because it's already a second, a two-story building. It's just carrying forward on that, and it's pretty much on top of the existing footprint, so I do not think it would be a detriment.
I don't think it would be a detriment. I did go out to the site, saw it from the front, saw it from the back, saw it from the side. I don't think it would be a detriment to the neighborhood.
I too visited the property. I don't see it being a detriment, and further, in hearing the neighbor who faces that not seeing as a detriment confirms my observation, so I don't see it as a detriment.
I agree. I think what is there and will be replaced, in fact, could improve the character of the neighborhood.
Okay, I agree. I do, or I agree, I don't think an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created. Second consideration, whether the benefit the applicant seeks can be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue. It would not require the area variance.
I think the answer to that is yes. I mean, the applicant can simply cut it by the 1.7 feet and not require, so that alone is definitely one option that would, I would say yes to.
Bear in mind, these statutory factors are not necessarily a up one, up one point, down one point consideration, so that's too much as a maybe points of consideration for us.
Yes, they could, I agree, they could cut it back to 1.7 feet, and they'd be within their rights with no variance.
I just wonder, Dave, building, building inspector Dave, if someone came up and said, I don't want, I don't want the variance, so I'm going to cut it short, so I'm going to put it 1.7 feet, I'm going to make a little notch there. What would you say as the building inspector? I could see you saying it would probably be better if you just built it straight up.
Well, I mean, we'd just look to see if it conforms with the code or not, so that's why this applicant's before the board. I understand the question from the board to the applicant, but again, to Montos' question, if they want to shave it down, they're going to get a permit and they're going to be allowed to build it.
Okay, so then, I mean, let me throw this out there. The specific benefit they, they're seeking, which is this office on the second story above, roughly above where the current porch is, they could achieve by simply shifting that entire area over 1.7 feet to the right.
They could probably even cantilever it or build down the side to make it square, make it look better.
I'm not insured, I think...
I'm just saying the indentation would be strange-looking.
To the extent that that imparts a material difference, it's so de minimis, I don't know that it's feasible.
It doesn't make any sense, really, in practicality, in my, in my, in my mind.
That's how you could avoid it. It would just be a relatively minor change.
Right.
Dave?
That wouldn't help, you know, anything that any of the neighbors would be looking to achieve, so...
As to whether the requested variance is substantial?
No, it's not substantial.
I agree it's not.
I concur.
No, mathematically, it's not substantial.
I don't think it's substantial either. As to whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, the board found.
I think, again, when you consider what they can do by right and what they can, what they're proposing here, the difference between those two will have no effect or adverse, an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental. an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood.
I mean, I heard the gentleman speak about concerns about waterfall off, but at this point, I have no factual to back that up, so I'd have to say right now, I don't see how this would cause any adverse effect or impact, at least the environmental, because I think that's what the gentleman was speaking to before, so without those facts, I can't say it does. Again, I think the point is, if this were on the first floor, we'd still have the same concern, so, so my answer to that is no.
I don't think it'll have an impact, and you're right, we don't have the information on the runoff, but if there hasn't been a problem to date with the runoff from the current house, I don't see how the addition is going to add greatly to any runoff that's going to occur later.
Well, I can accept as a baseline proposition that adding an extension onto a house can have an impact on the amount of water runoff, the issue is, the question before us isn't whether they can put an extension on the back of their house, the question is this 1.7 foot, feet on the side yard requirement, and I don't really see any basis for drawing a conclusion that there's a material difference when it comes to that. Whether the alleged difficulty is self-created?
Well, that's our fundamental question, that we all say, yes, everything is self-created.
Yes.
Yes.
Everything is self-created, the apparent purpose for seeking this is that there's a house that's over 100 years old that doesn't comply with current side yard requirements.
Right.
So, I don't see that being a consideration that weighs against granting the variance.
I agree with you.
Final consideration, whether the requested variance is the minimum necessary and adequate to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Anyone?
Go ahead, Jordan.
I think it's, it's a very small variance, I think it's, you know, it is as small as it can be.
I, I mean, it's small, yes, it can be smaller, it not require the variance, but as Jordan said, to me, it's not as substantial to concern myself on that.
I agree.
Agreed.
We're all agreed.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really see a practical alternative here, or a more minimal practical alternative. All right, um... Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the variance.
Subject to our standard conditions.
Of course.
Second. Second by Mr. Hogg. All right, I will start at this and this time, Ms. Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Hogg?
Aye.
Mr. Vatskirtis?
Aye.
Ms. Chacho?
Aye.
And I also vote in favor of it, before we close this matter, the same as I did last time, I will just ask the applicant, normally, we put conditions on variances that require application for a building permit within six months, commencement of construction within six months after that, completion within 24 months after obtaining the building permit, as well as payment of all fees and costs before certificates of occupancy and permits are issued, does any of that appear to be an issue right now? Okay. And if there is any issue, in particular with the time requirements, sometimes pandemics happen, whatever, on a showing of good cause, we can give you more time. Thank you. And I believe what we have left to do now is have our, where is my agenda?
1113 Walcott Avenue.
Yes, continue our discussion on 1113 Walcott Avenue, which...
Your variance is granted, you guys agree?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I should have, I should have concluded that, I'm sorry, the variance is granted, you can leave, and we should have that available for you by Friday.
So, everyone, I passed around, I don't know if it was already in your packets, but I did print out the draft of the memo, yeah, absolutely. Great, so everyone has it, um, near your, inner around your PowerPoint, and I don't know why the D and the R, the letters in the draft watermark don't show up. Also, I'm just gonna...
Important to note, this is not a public hearing, correct?
This is, yeah, this is not a public hearing, that's correct, which is, among other things, why I didn't have a vote on it, because I think we could just open it and do it, so.
Yep.
Mr. Palmer?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I am also an attorney, I'm with the law firm of Cuddy and Fader, on behalf of the applicant, Gavin Hecker, who is joining me this evening.
Too many lawyers here.
I'm also wearing a lot of different hats tonight, I'm not joined by Mike Bodendorf, Ari Siegel, or Rich DeAndrea, so I don't have hats with me, but just imagine, not the bald spot, the rest of it. So, tonight, we are here, as the chairman mentioned, for continued review of, as a seeker review, not a public hearing, associated with the project, and I even had a better joke, by the way, I have to go back to it, while I have not appeared at the Supreme Court, I did file with our Supreme Court today, an answer, but that's our lowest court, not the state, country's highest court, in any event.
Which is...
It's our lowest court. So, part of our discussion, we had last appeared before you on April 19th, we had a very productive conversation with the board there about a lot of questions that the board had, and the board had submitted some supplemental materials, I know the chairman had brought up a copy of the resolution, or a draft at that time, we have since seen, I think, a refinement of that draft, which had some additional questions, I have just provided the zoning board secretary a copy of a letter that we, we prepared, typically, we don't provide materials not with, within the submission timeframe, but given the nature of this review, we thought that it would be appropriate to get you something in writing, so you had it, I know you have your resolution really as sort of a guide for the discussion, but we tried to address each of those questions that the board had in each of our two letters. So, we did submit a letter to, to your board for the submission deadline, which was the first couple of questions that had come out, we had since seen some more, yes, yes, so by no means do we expect you to, to read all this tonight, it's really, I have all these details, I know it's been a long night tonight, so I don't want to get too far into those questions, and we'll certainly be more reactive to the board's comments than otherwise. Before we do dive into those, I did just want to touch on a quick note, we did also receive some communications from the New York State DOT, I think we had just gotten them when we had met with you last time, where we were still waiting, I think, at that time, for DOT to get back to us, so we did adjust the circulation, and we've since responded back to DOT, right now, the circulation will, enough Gavin, doesn't look like it, I told him, Macs don't work on the clicker, but the site plan as it stands, so the existing entrance into the property, we're now proposing to gate off during, other than during events, the secondary means of ingress, egress into the site, so that was just a way to help manage, DOT essentially doesn't want two points of ingress and egress out of the site, so now they're limiting it to one, trying to limit it to one circuit distraction, we are discussing with the planning board, but we have adjusted that to try and reflect DOT's comments. We also provided a third onsite attendance, so we've added more attendants to help manage the larger scale events, and, um, we also proposed a, what we call a post-monitoring study, which is a traffic study that would be after the, assuming the project were to be approved, the, there would be a monitoring period where once the, the project itself is underway, the hotel is in operation, events are being utilized, the monitoring study would monitor whether there are any impacts, or there are any backups, or if, God forbid, anything where it take place that wouldn't function, the applicant would have to go back to preferable drawing board with the planning board in order to address any issues that came up, these are, you find these typically, they usually come from recommendations of the city's consultant, but the applicant in this instance is trying to put forth other ways to ensure that they, you know, our studies are showing it's going to work, but we're, you know, we're sort of not just getting the answer to the test, we're trying to show the work, so that would allow us to do that, not only during, but after the fact for this project, so with that, again, we did provide the board just with a breakdown of your comments, but I think the resolution or the discussion with the board tonight will probably lead us into those comments, so with that, I'll turn back to the board, because I know it's been a long night tonight so far.
I have a question. During larger events, then you will open that gate.
Correct, the idea of the gate, yep.
What's the trigger point?
What's the number of, of people attending?
What triggers that gate opening?
I think it's only for the largest events, it's for...
Define that.
You'll have to come up to the mic. My name is Gavin Hecker. The, the trigger for opening the gate, the exit gate you're saying, you're talking about, it would be if needed for larger events, which...
When you wanted to, essentially.
When required.
Required by what?
By a larger event happening, so I would say above 200 people.
Above 200.
Yeah.
And depending on what work comes out with the planning board on the back end, there may not be a gate or anything at all, they may require that it go in one direction, ideally, right now, we'd be able to come out of the, of the existing main, calling it the main entrance, all these are existing entrances to the site, right, these are not, we're not proposing a new access onto 9D, but the state DOT controls, for the most part, what we do, so while, every, however it ends up being functioning will be a safe, the most safe and efficient access, for example, 9D, as you all know in that area, has the left turn lane, it, you know, there's all safe and efficient access points, it's just, however DOT comes to be, we'll have to, to be reactive, but it won't negatively impact our project, it's only going to be more beneficial.
During pickup and drop-off, if you have people heading north on 9D during safe pickup, they're going to be crossing, a larger event, they're going to be crossing in front of the exit, so you're going to have people trying to get out and go either north or south across a line of cars that's trying to get into the event space, while you have people possibly coming north, trying to turn left into the same event space.
Right, so we designed, so we did submit a couple times in our materials, so the last couple submissions we provided have included the traffic and parking studies, we've also done a sensitivity analysis and other details that have helped assess that there wouldn't be backups onto 9D, so the, the site is designed and...
Well, you haven't done a study where you show that amount of traffic actually moving through the site.
Correct, but the, the count, what the traffic consultant utilizes is data based on how many vehicles would be coming into the site during those periods, whether they be parking off-site, whether there would be drop-offs, so there are certain percentages that are factored into this.
And how much time it takes people to get in and out of cars.
Right, right, so you're, you know, you're, the scenario you somewhat presented, and I'm not to put words in your mouth, Lane, is that everyone that's coming to this facility is driving, or being dropped off. No, no, I'm just, I'm just playing out the scenarios.
And everyone's going to have their own car.
Right, I'm, I'm playing out the scenarios, we're taking, we're able to take credits based on our study, it's all in the study, but this, this is not tailor math or, or tailor on traffic, it's just in our, our study, so there's people that get dropped off, there are people that walk from the hotel, that are already parked at the facility and walk from the hotel, there will be people that will park at off-site parking areas and will walk to the facility, so there are...
Or people who park at, drop off, park at an off-site parking facility because they're not very close, and then will come back to pick up.
Right, or there may be Uber drop-offs, or there may be people coming from the train, right, so all of these are factored into the, the traffic analysis, the point being that there aren't 100 cars coming to the drop-off, that's all part of the traffic studies, it's all in the study to show that there wouldn't be a backup onto 9D, and the idea, we also have traffic attendants that are out on the street to ensure that if there were something to that effect, they'd be moving vehicles through the site, and the idea here with the circulation is to ensure that if there is an issue, Mr. Clark, your planner, mentioned the concern was, making sure that, hey, you want to have one direction on where vehicles are going, so that it, it doesn't result in somebody doing a three-point turn and causing that same consideration, so we have more than one way that it's managing vehicles entering, exiting, parking, dropping off, and the whole site plan has been refined to encourage that drop-off functionality without creating the backup. And I do have, I do have a list of our, of our comments, I don't, I'm happy to either go through them or, you know, certainly...
I have another quick question.
Yes, please.
I read your assessment form, and under item J sub I, where you state peak, when peak traffic is expected, you state morning, evening, and weekends, and randomly between the hours of 7:00 AM and 11:00 PM, and your hours of operation are 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, seven days a week. Am I correct in assuming this means large events could occur at any time?
No, so we did note in our most recent correspondence that the, so that was in our letter today, so that the, the events would typically, the larger events would be limited to weekends, so Friday, Saturday, but there are other events, smaller events that, again, wouldn't necessitate all of this discussion, that would otherwise be able to take place, and of course, you could have conferences that could be during the day.
Right, because further on in your parking management plan, it says seminars, workshops, and retreats with attendance ranging from 50 to 100, to 200, will occur weekdays, would the events occurring during the weekday have access? As close as I can get. In reading the assess, no, that's the wrong one, your traffic and parking management plan, workshops and retreats with attendance from 50 to 200 will occur weekdays, would events occurring during the day have access to the funeral home parking lot you're hoping to get the lease from?
Right, so we're, so maybe I'm, I'm hearing the questions differently, so we, just so for the benefit of the board that you now have our, our letter, so that specific comment is comment 16 to our letter, which is on page 10 of our May 17th letter, and our response noted that the original proposal had about 420, large events was going to be max, was going to be capped at 420, and original reviews with the planning board, we reduced that application maximum down to 350, and then we've noted that the occasional weekend events ranging between 125 to 200, so we've generally limited to Wednesday, the, the smaller events are Wednesday to Friday, and the larger events would really...
The 50 to 200.
Right.
The 50 to 200 are during the weekday. Those are also days that were in, the city hall parking lot would be used more often by citizens of Beacon.
Right, and our traffic study analyzed, for example, that, the original traffic study that had been, did the evaluation of the off-street or the, the public parking lots, was then reevaluated to consider those counts, so they, they looked at different, they, they were asked to go back by your, your city's consultant to go evaluate those additional times, and they, and they did. And they came to the same conclusion that there would not be a impact to the existing off-street parking facilities for the proposal, but again, there's a lot of factors that go into that, all related to the fact that people may walk, there are many people that will be staying at the facility itself, will be utilizing the hotel, and we actually did the sensitivity analysis, we were taking, originally, our study took credit for 100% people staying at the hotel would be utilized, if there was an event, would be utilized, would be at that event. The city planning board requested us to use what they call a sensitivity analysis, so say, don't take your 100%, take your 50%, and plug that in, meaning only 50% of the hotel was using it, so that would generate more parking or more demand, and again, the studies, which were viewed by your consultants, or the planning board's consultants, confirmed that there was still available parking facilities during the hours proposed for the applicant, and I would note, the applicant is willing to limit not only the hours of operation and, and certainly the, the, the number of large-scale events, the idea here is, we're just trying to, we're, we're trying to confirm, which we have through our studies, that we wouldn't have a significant environmental impact associated with this application.
Can I, can I ask a question to our attorney? So, regarding the correspondence of May 17, response 1A, second page, where it says the applicant, the applicant has met with representatives from the neighboring developments willing to continue to be responsive to the needs, the applicant's willing to, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, how do we hold them accountable to that, how do we measure that, how do we hold them accountable, what are the ramifications if they don't deliver to what they're saying here in the responsiveness, once they're in ongoing operations?
Yeah, we'd want, we'd want agreements with the private groups demonstrating that they... Yeah, we'd want, we'd want agreements with the private groups demonstrating that they do indeed have access to the parking.
No, no, this isn't about parking. This is, this response is conditions to restrict hours of late-night events, limiting large events to weekends. It's so we don't impact the communities, the neighboring communities.
Oh, yeah, you, we, that would be conditions in the resolution from the planning board.
And then if they were to be in violation of that, the city would shut them down? What would happen?
Yeah, they'd be in violation of their site plan, so by, you know, the city could then start issuing violations and force them to make those corrections.
Okay, thank you.
It's a weak enforcement.
Yeah, which would end them up in city court.
It's a weak enforcement. You can put any note you want on the plans, but we live with it after you guys approve it.
Thank you.
So just be aware of that.
Thank you.
And to that point, that's why we proposed the post-monitoring study. We're self-imposing a requirement that's not typical of an approval to confirm that what we're saying in practice happens, because we hear a lot of hypothetical or other feeling concerns, not from the board in general, but just in general, that it may have an impact. Our study shows that it won't, but we're willing to put that into practice, get the thing operating, and show through traffic reports, post-approval, that it functions. And if not, we're coming back to the board for, for the review. So just want to point that out as far as what that post-monitoring study is. It's not a, you know, sort of a toothless component. It's a self-imposed restriction that we have to show that our mitigation and management plans work. And that's not typical of a, of an approval. Sort of, as the building speaker said, he has to live with it. This one, we have to live with it. Before he has to live with it.
Hi, Taylor.
Hey, George.
I'm a lawyer too. Just figured everybody's putting it on the record tonight.
Got to put the ESQ on that little name tag.
My, my, so my biggest issue is just the concept of path least resistance, right? How, and I'm concerned with the people who live on Academy Street, Roundabout Street, Avenue, et cetera. You have a ton of parking further away. And you have some, you know, Taylor words on your response. But at the end of the day, people are going to park the closest that they can. They're going to come to events, you know, I know the high heel question kind of is, is, you know, silly. It sounds, you know.
Not if you're a woman.
But it just, you know, it, it sounds somewhat condescending in, in 2022. But at the end of the day, there are going to be people in, you know, dress attire presumably, and they're going to want to be the closest they can be to the event space. It's just, and because of that, how do you, how do you, how do you actually mitigate people from parking on those streets? I don't, I don't see how people are going to park. There's going to be a shuttle, there's going to be parking wherever. At the end of the day, if you're with your wife and you're going to an event here, where are you going to park?
No, I totally appreciate that comment, and we've, and we've, if I may, just, just briefly to address that. We've noted, and our traffic management plan tries to analyze that because it's true. People are going to do what's, you know, the easiest thing, and we hear it all the time when we're talking about applications on Main Street. People complain about the parking situation. You go back to the Randy days and say you could roll a bowling ball down Main Street. We've all heard that before. And now, you know, to say we have a parking problem. I parked right in front of the farmer's market on Saturday, one spot, you know, in front, or sorry, Sunday. One spot away from it, you know, from the farmer's market. And that's two weekends in a, or two weekends in a row where I was able to do it within one, on Main Street, on a Sunday. You know, and I'm just speaking to, you know, real-life circumstances, and it's true. I tried to park close. I've got a two-year-old, you know, it makes sense. You want to be there, you want to be close. That was, that's, that's approximate thing. I get it. But what we've been doing with this application and this management plan is defining all the ways that we can try and assess that. Attendees of the, of the, of the event will receive pamphlets and brochures that get, get out the word about where these locations are. We're going to have attendants on-site directing people to these locations. So it's not, and, and we're, and we're willing to put up signage, whether it's at, you know, West End Lofts, or if it's at, you know, any of the other areas where there might be that concern. We can certainly do that. But the idea here is to make it as functional as possible, knowing that no matter what we did, even if we had 40 people, you know, or 100 people, there's still going to be that one person that's, that's going to do it. And as a local, you know where to go and you know where to park, but that also comes with time too. When these, when these projects are in place, maybe not, might be those first six months are tough. But once the event is functioning and, and, you know, people understand and learn, I'm not going to park over there because this is how I can do it. And we have Beekman, we have access through the site to Beekman. That's being proposed through the cemetery, so we have a, a walkway that connects down to Beekman and linkage zone. So we have a lot of ways that we're trying to facilitate. And it sounds like Gavin is leaning over my shoulder, so I think he wants to tell you something.
I just want, I just want to ask a quick question, just to put it into the mix, because I haven't seen it in here. Has anything been spoken or discussed about valet parking, making sure that you guys have to just valet park everybody you don't have a parking space for?
So valet parking is noted as one of the potentials in, in the plan. If our, all of what we proposed in our management plan isn't operational. The thing about a parking and traffic management plan is that, sort of like a comprehensive plan, it's a living document. The idea being that it's, what we're proposing is how we can mitigate and manage perceived or potential impacts. But it has the ability to grow and adjust as the site is, is part of the community. And it, and to change and reflect what indeed is going on on the site. So that's the, the idea here is, is valet certainly could be an answer.
It's, it's been my, it's been the answer in my head since this has come before the board. The answer in my head is you guys have to valet park people. That's my answer.
We'll certainly do that as well. I also, I wanted to, to respond to Mr. Hogs' question about parking on streets such as Academy. So in reality, our study has shown us that the public parking available to us is actually more convenient and closer than the Academy Street would and Roundabout Street would be anyway. If you were to park on Academy Street, and especially if you had heels, you would not want to go down that hill in front of Academy Street. It's a approximately two-to-three-minute walk from the Tompkins Lot and about four minutes from Municipal Plaza. And on our site itself, it's no walk at all. So with all those spaces available, there is little need to park on streets such as Academy or Roundabout in neighborhoods. If it happens, then we, I mean, what we're going to do is try to mitigate that with, with giving out information ahead of time and also possibly posting signs, if we can, that say no event parking on a street such as Academy. But we don't see that as being a, a huge problem with the given amount of public parking available in the close proximity.
Um, I recently, I just saw the proposal for the new firehouse. They're proposing 55 parking spots at Tompkins. And I didn't, I might have missed it, but I did not see how many the fire department itself was going to require to have available in that lot.
Right.
Which would further reduce the 55. That cuts down, you know, a number from the original 68 plus or minus.
Sure, and, and that's an excellent point, and one that's, we've, we've discussed with your board and, and at length with the planning board. The same way we can't take credit for the future growth and proposals that the Main Street Master Plan and, and the parking committees are working towards. We're, our, as it stands today, and that's absolutely correct, with, including the Tompkins Lot, we have sufficient area parking to ma, to manage the large events. So what, where we provide all the parking needed for the hotel component of our, you know, our property onsite. The balance of it, whether it's the cafe or the event, the large events that are needed for this additional off-street parking are managed or available during all the times that we'd be utilizing those spaces. So even with that reduction, and I can't speak specifically to that number, it's only, again, it's only a few spaces, and it wasn't, you know, a tight number as far as our traffic consultant was concerned. We're also working on private agreements to help further, you know, make available parking to us that otherwise isn't available to the public in general, which is one with the funeral home and proximity to the site. And I will also just add that the, the functionality or the walkability of this area, I mean, it's exactly what your comprehensive plan has called for. I mean, we're proximate to the train station, we're proximate to Main Street. We are rebutting the linkage district itself, which we noted in, in the, the, the document itself, was to encourage the urbanization, the residential component, the mixed use, all of these things to function, bring folks from the train, bring them to Main Street. So it's all a big part of this application is to work all of those pieces together.
How are you going to address handicap parking? You only have two onsite. What do you do for a larger event?
So we are, that's currently in the, in the lab. It's a great question and was brought up actually at the planning board meeting last week. So handicap parking, ADA accessibility in general for both events and the hotel are a part of it. We have, again, already provided some on the site, but.
There's two.
Yeah, we're evaluating how that has to function, whether that has to be a part of the drop-off, whether that's, you know, so all of that is being considered. But it, it is something that is part of our approval, and if it impacts parking, it may even impact, you know, one or two of the total spaces that are provided onsite. But we are, that is currently being reviewed at the planning board level with respect to access. Those are more code compliance than they are zoning specific, but it's something that was brought up, I believe, by your engineer or your planner, so we're, we're evaluating it.
I know, I know it's work in progress, right? But you talk about you're working on dedicated parking. I think you mentioned the funeral home potentially is an example.
Correct.
Even though it's work in process, can you talk a little bit about what is the term you're talking with them? Is it a one-year, is it a three-year, is it a 50-year? And then how would you enforce that and how would you sustain that for the term?
Sure, so again, it's still a work in progress. Typically, they're handled as license agreements. As you know, that was a former restaurant, got a use variance from this board to operate as a funeral home. So as a, as an operating site there, they don't have any, generally speaking, don't have conflicts. They don't have night services or, that, they operate during the day. So there's a good symbiotic relationship there. Typically, those are license agreements and they are for a year. But again, just to be very clear, we don't need, it's based on our study, the available parking in off-street parking areas that are public spaces is more than sufficient to meet the demand of this, the largest events at this site. That's an additional layer, and we're not done with just with that one tenant. But just to be clear, that's, that's, we're just trying to add value or add available parking spaces. So I don't, we don't have a specific term, but license agreements are generally speaking revocable. But I'm not sure what the, the reason for revocability would be there unless we're partying in the, it sounds like I'm going to say it, funeral home parking lot. That just doesn't, that doesn't sound, I can't even say that one with a straight face. And I usually have a poker face. I lost it twice tonight, but now it's the third time.
Have you spoken with Dia also, who has a large number of parking spaces right there?
Mike.
We did speak with Dia, and we don't have anything with them, so.
We are, I mean, for event purposes, the idea of the center is not just a private for-profit operation. The intent of this facility is to be able to provide events and work with community, and those are all things that we want to be able to utilize here. So to, to be clear, this isn't just some wedding factory or anything. This is a, a performance space. This is all the things that can be, you know, great, community-driven conferences or otherwise. There's a lot.
It would seem to me that it, it could be a good, a good friendship.
Yeah, we'll, we'll certainly continue that communication. I think they may have insurance concerns.
They were very supportive of what we're doing. They had some security concerns for their parking lot. That was the main issue that they had with that, so we didn't go any further.
Thanks.
But again, just this area, as you're all familiar, I mean, it is, it is hilly. It's, it's part of, you know, Beacon's charm and part of our workouts. But that said, there are crosswalks, there are sidewalks, there's existing pedestrian facilities that will not be tasked from a significant adverse environmental impact perspective. Walking distance is most certainly not a significant adverse environmental impact.
I would also add that if you're, if you're talking in terms of the distance of Dia, the distance to the MTA Lot, which has free available parking on weekends with over 350 spaces, is also something that we can use as a contingency without all the other parking available, if that were to happen. And that would just be for larger events on weekends, of course, but that, that whole lot is available. The other thing is, if we're, I mean, we're not talking about future lack of parking or what the fire, what the Tompkins Lot is going to be, but there's also, the city has brought up striping 25 new parking spaces on Walcott as well, which we're not using to our advantage at this point. But, so there's a trade-off with what people could do in the future or what people can't do in the future.
We're certainly, the idea being, to Lane's point, we're mindful, or Mr. Curtis' comment.
Montos is fine, and I am not a lawyer. Just for the record.
For the record. So to those points, we, we, we understand there's a lot at stake and a lot of things can change, so we're not taking those credits. And, and the idea here is we're, the plan is designed to update or reflect if and when those lots change, then we have to make sure that there's availability, and there are abilities to condition these things too, in, in, in the resolutions at the planning board level in particular, when it comes down to it.
So Drew, what are our next steps?
Great question. I was about to go with that. So right now, the board has, has a draft memo before it. The goal is to finalize this memo, put it in a shape where you're happy to send it back to the planning board. You are not making a decision on the, on the parking at this time. You're, you're just telling the planning board, what are your concerns with respect to environmental issues related to the parking, there, potentially the parking variance? The planning board is then going to continue their seeker process, and they'll either render a negative declaration or a positive declaration. And I believe, Taylor, you said there is a subdivision involved?
So, yeah, if I may, to the planning board, the planning board attorney's comments, we, while a public hearing is not required for seeker analysis of this project because we do not have a subdivision, it's actually one of the first that I've been involved with that doesn't have a lotline removal or subdivision, so we don't have a seeker public hearing requirement. We've, the applicant wants to encourage the public's participation at the planning board to try and get a lot of the issues or concerns or comments from the neighboring community involved in this review, in the analysis. So we actually requested the boards, the planning board set their public hearing before a seeker determination. So we will have a public hearing, I think where Drew was going, we will have a public hearing on the, it will be for the site plan, but it's, or excuse me, the special permit and site plan, but it will be co-terminus with the seeker review. So the public will actually get to get comments and input at the next month's meeting and can go towards the seeker review.
And it would be helpful for the planning board to have a feel for, you know, what the ZBA discussion has been, what our concerns are before that planning board public hearing. So I don't want to rush this board. If you're not, if you don't think you're even close to being ready, that, that's fine. But this is going forward at the planning board level. There will be a seeker public hearing. After that seeker public hearing is closed and a seeker determination is rendered by the planning board, it'll come back to this board for determination about the variance, which may, may or may not change at that time. And then it'll go back to the planning board again for a public hearing on the site plan and special use permit.
And because we're not a subdivision, we don't have to have the seeker complete first, but because it's a coordinated review, we have to have seeker done before you could vote on a variance for this application.
That is correct. Taylor's comment is correct. So I think this board needs to start kind of formulating its ideas. If you have any specific comments on the memo that was circulated or anything, any questions or concerns you want to put in the memo. I did change high heels to formal attire. I think that's much more appropriate, so I apologize. High heels, you know, this is my head. And then I did also add, you know, just based on the discussion you were having, the board would like to encourage the applicant to pursue valet parking. That's a sentence that we can add. The ZBA is concerned about handicap parking on the site during the, the event. That will be addressed, but that's something we can also throw in our memo. So, so comments like that we can include.
So this is a memo that we would like to get to the planning board prior to their next meeting, correct?
Yes.
And is that, obviously, you've gotten some feedback from our discussion this evening. Do you want more feedback from us now, or do you want feedback from us via email?
In writing?
Yeah.
So what I would like is feedback now. That way, if any questions come up, then maybe the applicant can address. That would be good. But, you know, I think we keep asking the same questions kind of phrased a little differently, and, and again, we are going to have another opportunity to look at this. We're not making any decisions. So feedback now would be great. My plan would be to get feedback now, circulate a draft to this board, you know, this week. And then you guys can offer comments to me as track changes or, you know, little email edits. That way, we can work towards finalizing the memo.
So Drew, just let me clarify here. Feedback, I have no additional questions at the moment.
Yeah.
To be included. I think we were, at least from my perspective, pretty well complete. I do have feedback as far as how I see it. Is that the type of feedback that you're asking for tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, I'm more than willing to speak up now. I think the need for 134 parking spaces still in my eyes is very substantial. Even though the applicant is working on securing some of those spaces, I'm going to use a term that Dave used earlier. working on securing some of those spaces. I'm going to use a term that Dave used earlier. I think there's a lot of weak enforcement in this, and given the amount of shared or public spaces that they're relying on, I believe it's very substantial, thus related to, you know, it's impacted the envi, environmental impact. I also want to say, I appreciate all the mitigating efforts that have come back to us in the, in the correspondences, but all those mitigating efforts are also weak enforced enforcement. And I'm concerned that if this were to be approved and moved forward as proposed, how would this be enforced? I don't think it would be, or if it would, I, I think it would be a tremendous burden on the city, number one. So, I'm concerned about how substantial I think the request is, and I'm concerned about the weak enforcement aspects of, of it all.
If I may, Drew, might, might I just comment just on, on one particular point of clarification? There's just, I would, I guess I'd certainly defer to your counsel, but the enforcement, which is a mandatory, it's something that the, the code enforcement officer is charged with, and, and respect to Mr. Buckley, not trying to put more on his plate, but that's not, generally speaking, a grounds for, for, for having an impact. It's, it's an enforcement duty. The zoning would only, is only as strong as its, as its enforcement.
So, I guess my comments are geared more towards, as I mentioned-
Substantiality, right.
The substantiality, the impact quality of life for the, the residents in the area. So, my comments are all geared towards that, and I think they've been consistent with the last two months where we've been meeting.
Yes, and I, I would note, we did note that in our, our first response letter earlier this month, as far as the substantiality, not in your five-factor version of the substantiality, but we would, we would also, what we did note in that correspondence is whether it was, you know, really the 350-person max events or, or 300-person max events, the amount of parking that that, that's associated with those two numbers is not a meaningful impact. So, we sort of did an alternatives analysis, which we discussed at the last meeting, to show, you know, the substantiality. So, it's not just a percent of the deviation from what's permitted, what's required, and the variance necessary, because we even talked percentages at the last meeting. So, it's, that's, that's not the standard, but we certainly understand that, and hopefully, our comments have tried to address how we mitigate, and we appreciate the comments that we've been working to do that, because this is a, an ongoing process, and clearly, the applicant is literally right here next to me.
I'd like to add one thing. Currently, there's, there's nothing in place to control any of this, and 336 people can be there. We're working to make that better.
Yeah, but please don't forego, it's a different type of use. And so, we can't talk about a hypothetical versus a what you're proposing.
Right, and you'll recall, we had that conversation at the last meeting where the church, you know, the church is not maximizing the space, and it can't main, it can't keep it open, because it doesn't have, it's not utilizing the space to its, the space to its capacity. So, we're, we're certainly trying to use it to, you know, find a more fulfilling passion. Of course, the, the most important part of this application too is the applicant is taking on a significant, you know, project to, to, you know, better and improve and maintain this historic building. That, and a cemetery that's been, you know, foul for, for 100 years and not looked after. So, there's other aspects to this. So, the ask that we're asking is certainly unique to this property, unique to this area of the city. So, when considering all of these impacts, you know, think of it too, you know, part of the thinking of this is that this is this property. This isn't just any property in Beacon. There's a lot of uniqueness and, and factors that go into this consideration for this site.
And, and let me acknowledge for the record, I do appreciate what you said before, that the applicant wants the public to speak in the planning board, because I think that's important. We haven't heard from the public yet, right? So, we have, when this does come to us, we'll hear from the public. Right now, we're, we're just giving you, at least I'm giving, I shouldn't say we, because I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, I'm giving you my perspective in the three months in hearing.
Yep.
I'm trying to back up why I think this is, number one, substantial, and, number two, why I want to make sure we do not impact quality of life of residents. Once we start hearing from the public, maybe all that will be, that second part at least, maybe that would become a moot point, moot, moot point.
Overruled.
You're right, you're right.
I choked on that for a second. But right now, those are my concerns from three months of hearing.
We appreciate all the comments, and certainly, we, we've been doing everything we can to work it in. We, we made the request to come to your board to get this feedback, because we thought it would be helpful to, to put all of this in, you know, into the proposal. And I think a lot has gone into it since we first started meeting with you to make this a, you know, to hopefully get this to be a viable development.
Taylor?
Mr. Hav.
Not to be rude, I think it would be helpful if the board agrees for the board to have a conversation with our attorney and try to finalize this document somewhat without having a point-counterpoint review.
Yeah, our submissions are there. I agree. We're fine with that.
Thanks. Drew, I, I like the draft. I think you probably have taken notes tonight. I'm sure you, you just took additional notes with Montos's comments. You know, I think, I think my comment earlier regarding, you know, the path to least resistance is, is an important point to add. I also, just, just one comment, I was, you know, glancing over their submission, again, response 1A. I don't know if I, I mean, again, we're getting into kind of details, but I don't know if I would define some of these neighboring streets as high-density urban living.
Yeah, I think we should probably try going through this on a more line-by-line basis. Just sorry to interrupt, we're just throwing that out there so we can actually get a resolution put together.
We're not having a resolution, right? We're just, I mean, she, we have a draft memo, right? You're saying-
Call it what you want.
Sure, sure, sure.
We're going to put ours together and have a vote on them. Sorry.
No, I, I was pretty much done after that.
All right, so look, let me, in the interest of advancing this along, let me just throw this out there. So, in terms of the draft memorandum, if you're looking at the third page of this at the top, right, the beginning of the section that says comments, after reviewing the information submitted and the criteria and other considerations set forth in section 617 of the New York regulations, after that, what I would say is, well, I would propose saying, I'm asking whether people agree with this, for one thing. The board's view is that the proposed parking variance may include the potential for at least one significant adverse environmental impact to it increased local traffic and parking on nearby residential streets, period. The mitigation efforts outlined by the applicant could alleviate some of these impacts, but this potential for, this potential alleviation is not sufficient to overcome the possibility that there will be adverse environmental impacts. I'd throw out there that I kind of think that's the conclusion we have to reach, and then from there, it's a matter of what else do we need to say to the planning board so they can address this, and beyond that, this is something we deal with presumably in the future when it's a variance and-
Right, and if I may, that's just on the maximum event size of 350 persons. If, if the number was 250 or 300, that might be a different conclusion.
I, I think that's something pertinent that we should be including in here.
Right. I just, I just wanted to make a point of clarification, that's the 350 maximum that's driving that concern, not the general uses on the site. It's the maximum event, large events.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. Well, before moving on to anything else, let me, what, what do people think about that as a conclusion?
So, I agree that that's definitely a conclusion. I don't know if that cuts off Elaine's concern regarding, I don't know if that's comprehensive enough to include, that impacts, I'm, sorry, fumbling with my words here.
That you're referring to.
Other impacts.
The other impact, basically, people, you know, having to cross the street. I don't know if that covers that more so what you said, Dave, it covers the parking in the neighborhoods, which is maybe different than, I don't know.
Let me ask this. Is that, is that, is that a substantial environmental impact? I'm not sure that people crossing the street standing alone is a substantial environmental impact.
I'd have to look up the definition of substantial environmental impact to answer your question. I don't know. I mean-
And people live, living either side of the project during pickup and drop-off, there's a potential for the noise levels to go up in, in the residential neighborhoods, people coming out at 11 o'clock at night. I'm old, I go to bed at 11 o'clock at night. People out there slamming car doors and yelling, "I'm not happy."
I go to bed at 9:30.
Yeah, I suppose that is true.
Right, we'd have to comply with noise ordinances. There's no question there, so we, we would have to comply.
People off your site making noise, you have no control over.
Yeah, Jordan told me to stop, so I'm, I'm trying to not, I'm letting you discuss, so I apologize for interjecting again.
I know it's hard.
Appreciate your efforts.
I would, I'll add one more point. You do have a traffic consultant at the planning board that is reviewing these, for example, the turning, in-and-out, site circulation, and DOT, so all of those will be managed, but certainly, if that's a comment back from the board, the planning board appreciates it.
We have to, what, what we have to do in the end, right, when it comes back before us, we're looking at, we need 136 off-street parking spaces, and we've only got 32.
Thirty-two.
That's right.
So, to me, I feel that's very, very, I have to agree with Montos. I feel that's extremely substantial, and I think that the project needs to find a way to purchase some more parking spaces and mitigate that, because I can't see really coming back to us and having this particular numbers looking at us and being able to, I, I don't see myself being able to pass it-
Understood.
Like this. So, I think that you need to have things that are in place, like Tompkins, like the St. Andrews parking lot. I mean, I think you have to maybe buy them or something, I'm not sure, but, you know, you have to have things in place that are going, going to take this number down. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
This, this number is, is, is way out of whack.
Understood.
And it's a busy street. We've got all this new residential there that wasn't there before, so, you know, two years ago-
They took all our parking. I'm kidding.
They took up all the parking. We would have no problem.
I'm kidding.
So, you know, I think that, I think that the, the people who are, are doing the project need to get in hyperdrive on finding concrete parking, and I think the valet thing, you know, when you sell a ticket, if you buy, if you get their early tickets, you got these parking spaces right across the street, or you got, but if, you know, after ticket 100 or whatever it is, now you have to pay another $30 per ticket, because we're going to have to valet you, or something like that. That's kind of what I'm thinking.
Understood. Thank you.
All right, so should we, should we, assuming we're in agreement on the language I, I'd mentioned before, should we be saying at least one significant adverse environmental impact to it increased local traffic and parking on nearby residential streets, as well as impacts due to noise from individuals traveling to and from off-street or off-site parking locations?
Or impact existing neighborhoods' quality of life.
Yeah, that's-
Be more specific.
Yeah, I think, I'm going to list, list all those, those out. I know you had that, the one main sentence, and then, I mean, we're, I'm going to-
Yeah, right.
-touch upon all of it.
I think you have a, a good outline from what Dave said, and then you can just add our, our comments to that, and then circulate maybe.
And then other word, after that, I'd proceed by saying, because the way you have it drafted, it says, "The board is concerned about the applicant's high dependency on shared parking." It's a, among other things, the board is concerned about the, the applicant's high dependency on shared parking. And just based on what Montos just said to me, but, I mean, I agree with it, obtaining permanent rights to parking would be a significant alleviating factor.
Correct.
But I mean, bottom line, I, I realize there are practical implications to what can actually be done by-
Right. Right, and we'd ask the board just to consider in making that recommendation back that you're supportive of the use, meaning the adaptive reuse, the historic preservation aspects of it, the uses, you know, because that's, that's two part of this, this analysis, part of the secret analysis is, is consideration of what's being posed on the site. We, we're hearing very clearly, the size is, the, the max event is too much, but that the use itself is a, is a great, or, I'm saying it, but, I'm the applicant, but a great reuse, you know, consistent with your plans.
I think it's a great use.
So, that would be, if the board would see fit, we'd, I think that that would go, you know, be important for the planning board too, because they've had similar comments about the use.
Okay, so.
I know you were just recapping for what the board, what you think the board should say, but I just want to be clear, as an individual, I am very concerned about impact of quality of life to the existing residents. Irrelevant if you're looking for 350 or any other number. I want to make sure, from that perspective, there is no negative impact-
Sure.
-to the existing residential communities. I'm very concerned about that. So, I love the idea of concerts, especially if you bring bands that I like. That's great, but don't impact my neighbors.
Of course, and we are doing landscape screening and, and all of that is incorporated into the site plan and layout. That's why we don't have parking in other locations.
I just want to put that out there, because in your kind of reiteration back that the board might think this is a great idea. It's a nice, it's a nice idea.
How will the neighbors hear Billy Joe's River Works?
There you go.
Right.
And I live on the river, and the noise bounces right off the water, and Friday night, I'm waking up dancing in my bed sometimes.
Billy, Billy.
It's indoor, we might, we might add it as indoor events, not outdoor events. Very important distinction.
There you go.
Billy Joe still have the country nights?
Oh, my gosh. You can't even believe it.
I think there was a little bit of a joke in that.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
You know lawyers.
Three lawyers, or four lawyers walking to the bar, yeah.
I happen to be an IT guy. I'm not a lawyer, so I'll put that out there.
One says ouch.
So, Dave, do you-
Thank you, somebody's right. Got it.
Do you want to hand me your notes to, to include? Do you want to-
Well, everything I've, I've written down, I was, I was keeping track of just for my own purposes, but yeah, I'm happy to do that, but it, I've been-
Or you can, you can type, because I think-
I'm happy to do that. Look, let me do that in a minute, because-
Do you want me to email you, or do you want me to email you?
No, we'll, we'll talk about, let, let Dave finish, and then we'll talk about next steps.
All right, look, I had two wordsmithing things in this. The second paragraph, what you were just talking about, it is also unclear to the ZBA how much traffic this project will generate. First of all, I think we should be saying how much traffic the parking variance will generate, because that's kind of the question in front of us. How many people from the hotel lot should go to events at the church? There is too much uncertainty and speculation surrounding the project as proposed. I don't think there's too much uncertainty. I simply think there, that there remains uncertainty about surrounding the project as proposed, or uncertainty and unknowns. I just think that's kind of too strong of a statement, frankly. And then, in the next paragraph, if you're looking at the third line down, it says, "People will not walk 15, 1,584 feet in high heels to a wedding," or formal attire, "especially when free parking is available on residential streets nearby." I'd say people may not walk, I mean, kind of for the same reason, just too, panning with too broad of a brush. I would also think we ought to be adding in a statement that we, and again, I'm basing this kind of just based on what's been talked about up here tonight, but we should, and we would encourage the use of valet parking. We have ongoing concerns about whether or not the proposed parking arrangement will actually be permitted because of the handicap parking requirements, which, well, we don't need to include this, but that was the one that came up at the last meeting.
Just say residence.
I understand this is still on the planning stage, but the point being, that's still a significant factor that's outstanding. Montos's statement about being very concerned about quality of life, and then the big question I would say beyond that is, do we want to include a statement to the effect that, other issues aside, we're generally supportive of repurposing this building and trying to reuse the existing structure and, you know, in, in some manner that while we think these are the conclusions we need to reach, we're not saying we don't think this should happen, or that we would or would not sign off on a proposed variance in the future. I mean, or what do we want to, how do we want to conclude this to the planning board? These people are evil, you should never consider that.
No.
Sure. Well, I think, you know, I think we have a conclusion.
Well, I think, you know, I think we have a conclusion. I don't know, I don't know if we need to mitigate it necessarily.
Mitigate what?
Our, if our conclusion is that we think it's going to be impactful, you know, they've asked us to, and Dave said, should we basically mitigate our statement, you know, water it down with saying, oh, we're also supportive of the redevelopment, blah, blah, blah. And I'm saying, I don't know if that's-
While we're supportive of the redevelopment and the efforts, they're great. It sounds like a great project.
I mean, personally, I wouldn't even say that.
Well, that was my point.
That's not what we're being asked. We're not being asked to be supportive. We're asked on our position of the environmental impact, given the variance of 100. Or I would be very simple and say, we are concerned, period.
It needs to be-
And I'm not a lawyer again.
Parking needs to be mitigated. How do our opinions-
Yeah, just delete it all. We are concerned, period. Send it back.
Get some more parking. That's, that's-
That's good. The planning board will be like, they talked about this when they-
Okay. I think it's obvious.
Great. I think everyone has done an excellent job. This is not something we deal with very often. And the board has put a lot of time, and the applicant has put a lot of time into responding to the questions. So this has been a very good discussion. And so we'll see what the planning board does. For next steps, I'm going to take this. I've, my notes are kind of scattered. Dave, I did not get the full sentence that you read before about after-
Well, let me do this. I'll just come up to you after the meeting, because, I mean-
Or why don't, why don't I just clean it up?
Sure.
Send it out, and then you can just add it. Everyone can, can send it back to me with either your comments in a, in an email, or send it back with, I would, I would ask track changes. That way, I can kind of see what the changes are. And then I'll, you know, every time I do an update, I will circulate to every, circulate to everyone. But this is not to be a discussion amongst board members. So, you know, I'm, I'm asking you to, you can CC Dave and, and email it to me. And I'll be making all the edits and making sure that you guys see, see the drafts.
What do you mean by track change? What are you saying? You want to be able to track-
In Microsoft Word.
Oh, Drew.
What?
Judy, you can just make, just make edits to the document. It's, it's okay. Don't worry.
We'll, we'll figure it out.
It's a picture in Microsoft Word that you can turn on. It'll keep track of what changes.
Yeah, I don't need to edit the document. I don't need to, I can just give you my comments and you put it in.
Perfect. You just, don't edit the document. Give me your comments. If you want to edit the document, use track changes, please. And if you forget, that's okay. Don't panic. It's, I can figure it out.
Oh, so in the Microsoft document, that's a, that's a way to use it, is, is use track changes, and that's how you make it. So they'll be highlighted to you, and you'll know where they came from.
Exactly. Exactly. I'll know where they came from, and I'll know exactly. Whatever you, whatever works for you is, I-
Either way works for me.
Whatever your heart desires. I don't care. I don't care. And that way, I can show everybody else what the changes were to the document. And then if you have direct, you know, comments, we can work it out. But again, not a conversation amongst the board members, just directly emailing it to me.
Right. We don't want to get in the, in trouble of having a meeting-
Exactly.
-that's out of the public eye, even though we don't need to be in the public.
I will, I know that you may be not always monitoring your Beacon email accounts, but you know, we're gonna, I'm going to work on this pretty, pretty quickly, so we can get it back to the applicant and back to the planning board. So just, you know, keep an eye on your emails. Everyone has my cell phone number, or my, my office number. You can call me as well.
I've been untypically quiet. So I'm just going to make one request, because it wouldn't be a Taylor Plummer presentation without a request. But to the zoning board attorney's comments, if the board could get us the comments, we have to submit to the planning board supplementally, within the next, I think, probably two weeks, two weeks from today. So if possible, even like two days before that deadline, that we could have, so we'd be able to refer to this information in our supplemental submission to that planning board. Because if, if your comments come in a, in a month, we'll have to hand deliver, unfortunately, to Amanda, this type of letter with the comments.
Drew, our, our goal is to workshop this this week and early next week, correct?
Yes.
I would, I would even go further and say, look, before we leave, I'll make sure you can take this. That's fine. But-
If you're sure, it's, it's okay.
I'll, I'll make sure you've got that language.
Oh, I could just take a picture of it with my phone.
And you should be able to just circulate it tonight. Let's try to get this done in the next two days while you remember everything.
I don't, I don't think I'll circulate it tonight.
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow afternoon, I will circulate.
Second ask, can we lock Drew in the room tonight?
Okay. The point being, let's, let's make it a point to, to get this turned around real, like, fast, because among other things, it's a lot better to do this stuff while you remember the meeting.
Yeah. Keep a lookout. Tomorrow afternoon, I will, I will get this to everybody. I'll clean, clean this up, and we'll, we'll send it out. And then any comments, again, we'll come back. And ultimately, Dave will have final sign-off on what gets sent to the planning board. Dave Jensen, not Dave Buckley.
And then, before we conclude, just one FYI, I got a request, we were going to mention this. We got a request from the planning board on lead agency designation. What was the project? Do you remember?
I've-
Hold on, I can pull it up.
I forgot.
They, they are proposing to be lead agency on 146 for Plink. And after talking briefly with Drew, I signed off that we had no position on the main lead agency. Not opposed, not in favor, whatever.
Cool.
Fine.
And with, I don't think we need a motion to return.
Just one, one other thing. This is Etha's last meeting, and we need to recognize her 30, how many years of service?
The longest will be 30 years.
Almost, almost 30 years of service to the board. We have, we have a card for you, and I have some cool gifts. You're great. And thank you. And Amanda, if you stick around long enough, you two can get Alps and alcohol.
Thank you, Etha.
Thanks, Etha.
And Etha, I heard you started when you got your working papers at 14, right?
Pretty much.
I look-
I'm all in law school.
I look forward to outdriving you on Friday.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Etha.
Thank you.
I'm leaving you a good hand, so you'll be fine.
Yes.
She's like, oh, no.
No pressure. Okay. Are we done?
I, I think we're done. I, I don't think we need a motion to return.
Just a, a motion to close the meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Etha.
Thank you.
Thank you.